Nick, are you picking us up from chambers?
Yep.
Great, thanks.
Hello, I see Melissa, Jessica, Olivia's just jumped in. Kim, can you put yourselves down video? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Say, are we recording?
Ben's here tonight, not recording yet.
Okay, let us know. Give us the signal when we are. Thank you.
And I could probably start mayor whenever, whenever you start the meeting.
Okay, you can start the recording. I don't know. We just make certain that's running and then we'll start in with the roll call with the welcome and roll call. Is it running?
We're recording now.
Thank you. Good evening. It is Tuesday, January 17th at 5:31 PM. And I'm opening this city council meeting. My name is Barb Nosworthy. I am the mayor and I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Counselor Baxter.
Present.
Counselor Bosmans.
Present.
Counselor Buell.
Here.
Mayor Protem Yusef.
Here.
And Mayor Nozworthy.
Present. Thank you. And is the translator on board? Can we have the introduction of the translator, please?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. Great. So good evening, everyone. Diego Pons here with Community Language Cooperative. I'm joined by my colleague Alonso. We're here today. Thanks for having us at your meeting. The organization is a meeting minute commitment towards language justice. So all this means is that we're here to create a space where people participate and to engage in the language of their heart, just simply the language they show most comfortable in. We'll continue using simultaneous interpretation here on Zoom to create the space in English and Spanish for today's meeting. So once I've been saying this in English, I'll repeat it in Spanish. At that moment, we turn on the interpretation. When interpretation is on, you'll be able to see that glow icon of this interpretation there in the bottom right hand corner of your computer screen. Select that glow icon, please. Once you see it pop up on your screen and please select your preferred language. If you happen to be joining today's meeting yourself on your tablet, I'll instead ask you to please look for the more button or the three dots button in order to select your preferred language that way. So if you're not fully bilingual, we're encouraged you to select your preferred language. So you may utilize the interpretation whenever someone is going to be speaking in the opposite language. If you are bilingual, then you can just feel free to listen to everyone in the original language. You will not need to select any language channel if you do not want to do so. And you will not ever have to hear our voices as the interpreters. As always, when you select your language, you may check new original audio. So you don't have to be hearing both languages at the same time. As always, we like to remind all people, just please pay attention to the speed in which you're speaking. Please make sure that you're speaking at a conversational pace and please make sure that you're not pick up your reading speed. So thank you so much for that. Buenas tardes a todos y todas. Mi nombre es Diego Pons. Estoy aquí hoy con mi colega Alonso y estamos aquí de parte de la Cooperativa Comunitaria de la Justicia del Lenguaje, CLC. Muchas gracias hoy por invitarnos otra vez a su reunión. Los organizadores de esta reunión se han comprometido hoy a la justicia del lenguaje. Lo que eso significa es que queremos crear un espacio para que todas las personas puedan participar e involucrarse en el idioma a su corazón. Simplemente el idioma en el que todas las personas se sientan más cómodas. Vamos a continuar hoy utilizando la interpretación simultánea aquí en Zoom para poder crear ese espacio en inglés y en español. Cuando yo termine de decir esto, vamos a activar la interpretación. Ya cuando está activada la interpretación, usted va a poder observar ese icono del globo terráqueo que era la interpretación allá abajo en la derecha de su pantalla. Por favor, seleccione ese icono del globo terráqueo cuando vea que aparece con su pantalla y por favor, seleccione su idioma preferido. Pero si usted está asistiendo hoy a esta reunión en su celular o su tableta, le vamos a pedir que, por favor, busque la opción que dice more, que quiere decir más, o posiblemente el botón de tres puntos para que usted pueda seleccionar su idioma preferido de esa manera. Si usted no es completamente bilingüe, le vamos a aconsejar a que, por favor, seleccione su idioma preferido para que pueda utilizar interpretación cuando alguien esté hablando en el otro idioma. Pero si usted sí es bilingüe, entonces usted puede sentirlo y poder escuchar a todos en su idioma original. No necesitarían seleccionar ni un canal de idioma sino deseas hacerlo y jamás tendrían que escuchar nuestras voces como intérpretes. Y como siempre, cuando usted seleccione su idioma, puede hacer clic en silenciar el audio original para no escuchar ambos idiomas al mismo tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Diego. Thank you. I will open the city council meeting as I have every study session and city council meeting with a land acknowledgement. This is my statement. It does not reflect individual statements from council or council as a whole. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Njuju, Tenay, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and several, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous people were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government. It is important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before us and who, to this day, continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in my acknowledging this legacy. Thank you. Before we proceed, I'll ask council if there are any actual or perceived conflicts of interest. Okay, great. Thank you. Under presentate proclamations and presentations, we are set to have the swearing in of Todd Norvell as the Associate Municipal Court Judge. Ben, are you in the chambers?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And I apologize. We've been waiting for Mr. Normal to hop on virtually. And he hasn't entered in yet. So that may have been a little bit of information lost in translation with the virtual meeting only this evening. So unfortunately, I can't swear commit at this moment. But if he does come into as an attendee here in a meeting, I can let you guys know if it's appropriate to do the swearing in at another time in this meeting. But if not, we can reset all that.
Thank you. No, if you'll signal to me, we'll finish whatever subject we're on and then so as not to keep him waiting for too long and to actually have him sworn in. Just notify us and in between topics, we'll, we'll try to make that happen. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So the next item on our agenda then is public presentation. And this section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide three minutes of comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. And I will remind folks that we do have public hearings later tonight on specific topics. City, city council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to city council. As this is a virtual meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. We receive comments before noon and council is encouraged and I make a point to read those comments so that I have that information before each city council meeting. I'd also like to acknowledge that the host for this meeting will put a clock up on the on the screen, which is a three minute countdown. And I will around 30 seconds try to flag my hands as a gentle reminder that you need to wrap things up. I would, I don't like to have to call a stop, but I will because we do need to keep moving. Ben, is there anyone in the chambers who has requested to be able to speak during public participation?
No one in the chambers. I think it'll just be a virtual public participation tonight. And I think there's actually a few of the MIAC members here to give updates on the MIAC program.
Wonderful. So I'm going to go to the host. Do we have anyone who has raised their hand and wishes to speak? And again, reminder to put up the clock, please.
Yes, Mayor, we are going to start with those MIAC students though. So first off, we have three of them to speak. We have Eliza Bosmans, Ethan McGinnis, and Yu Song Huang.
Very good. Thank you.
Hello, is it starting now? Yes. Okay. My name is Elisa. I am a co-chair along with Yu Song, who's also co-chair of Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. And we've got a couple of projects that we wanted to give an update on for you guys. Yeah. I'm not sure if the other students are, can participate on this, but I can just start with what I'm planning. I have, well, first of all, Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee is kind of a misleading title. We kind of plan youth outreach events in the community. So my event was a snowdown event. I always do, last year I did a little competition. It's called Hand on the Van, where we have kids, a kind of fifth grade level and younger participate in the competition to win prizes, just to have more of a youth kind of kids based activity. That's not so much centered around drinking or anything like that. Yeah, I think that's my project and we have some others in the, in the works. I'm not sure if the other two want to jump in.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Right now, a lot of us are planning our projects, but because of us, a lot of us are new to MIAC. And Elisa and I are the only members that have participated last year. These new MIAC members are kind of getting used to the club. And right now they are reaching out to organizations and scheduling their projects so that we know what requirements we have to meet, what resources they need, and how the project is going to run down. So for me, I'm doing a trail cleanup day on Earth Day. So I reached out to Durango Trails. And basically, right now, we're just in the stage of planning the dates and making sure we have enough people to do the job. So yeah.
I can hop on next. My name's Ethan McGinnis. I'm, I'm just a member of MIAC. The project I am planning is a poetry and art contest in local elementary schools centered around Colorado history. I have a working partnership with the Durango Cowboy Gathering to help make this possible. So it should be pretty exciting. I'm in the planning stages right now, but should hopefully come to fruition in April to May. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all, three of you, for your work and for your commitment to the community. And also, Ben, thank you for your staff liaison work. Do you have anyone?
Yeah, can I ask them a question, please?
Sure.
I really appreciate the update, all of you. Thank you so much. We always enjoy when you guys give us presentations at live and on Zoom. So thank you. I did have a question. You mentioned, you brought up a good point about the name of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council and that it, you think maybe it's not an appropriate name and you know, I think that there has been discussion around that in the past. And I think they switched it at one point to, I think it was Youth Engagement Council or something like that. But in any case, I would encourage you to have that discussion with the mayor in your meetings and if it's not appropriate to think of something that is.
Thank you. Next, do we have anyone else on the who's raised their hand to speak?
Yes, we do, Mayor. If I could have just a second. Bring them in. We have Dave Woodruff first.
Hi there. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, and I'm looking for the clock so you can see that. Thank you. Okay, Dave, please go ahead.
Excellent. Hello, councilors, and thank you for your time to let me speak today. My name is Dave Woodruff and I'm here today as a concerned citizen for the city of Durango and the potential redistribution of the lodgers tax revenue. I want to bore you with the history of the lodgers tax revenue discussion that led into the November 2021 ballot, as you are all acutely aware of those stakeholder conversations. And the agreement on the revenue allotment, what we all know is that the measure passed in the majority and our DMMO visit Durangos started receiving those funds in July of 2022. That being said, the funds that come in and outgoing have only had seven months of use and distribution. And I think that's enough of a sample size to be able to accurately see where the money is going, how it's best being used and the potential ROI and money accrued and spent. I'm of the opinion that more time is needed to look at where the money is going to better be able to make a more informed decision on how that money is being spent. Taking your time will, with this decision will allow the decision to be made with more clarity and better data to better make a lodger's better choice in lodger's tax allocations. I think it's premature to go back to the voters in this manner when we know so little on the impact this revenue is making. Yes, I absolutely agree that housing and childcare are critically important issues our community faces. There are existing statewide programs and grant opportunities that we can draw from other, other than taking money out of the lodgers tax. The Colorado Affordable Housing Fund was implemented out of Proposition 123 this past November that could help considerably towards affordable housing in our community. There is the Home Investment Partnership Fund, the Housing Development Grant Fund, and the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, to name a few more that we can leverage for state and federal dollars. If you're all fortunate enough to be able to attend the economic forecast held by Fort Lewis College on January 5th, you would have heard that 26% of our workforce is attributed towards the tourism economy. Additionally, you would have also heard that Durango and Platte County have weathered the economic headwinds better than many other communities because of our robust tourism economy. Taking money away from the marketing of Durango only hurts the city and community of Durango in the medium and long term. By marginalizing the revenues going to visitor and go, we are taken away from the families that own and operate those businesses along with the employees that rely on those businesses being open. Additionally, we don't have to create this false narrative that just because people in our community are pro tourism, that they are anti affordable housing or feel that housing isn't an important priority for the city. We do think it's an important issue that we address now and in the future, but not at the cost of taking away from our important tourism industry. In an increasingly, increasingly competitive environment, Durango needs those revenues to remain relevant in the eyes of potential visitors that come to recreate and visit Colorado. Before we make any knee jerk reactions on funding that the public would have formed the 2021 ballot measure, let's make sure that we at the very least have good data, at least a year's worth on the revenues going into sustainable tourism for our economy and the potential ROI for the money being spent. I do not think a good informed decision can be made without getting the right information about the fund and how that money is being spent. With other potential revenue resources available for housing, let's strive for acquiring those grants that have been dedicated to our communities like ours and keep our vibrant tourism economy intact. Thank you in advance for your time and I look forward to more robust conversations down the road that both address the issues around housing and to keep our tourism economy healthy.
Thank you, Dave. Let me say for your information and for those that are maybe planning to speak, we did discuss this at the study session earlier today and the council consensus was to not go forward at this time with a reallocation in April of the lodgers tax, but to include lodgers tax in a robust discussion of all potential sources of revenue for city needs. So I did want to make certain that if those are in the queue to speak about that particular ballot, there was consensus to not go forward at this time. Thank you. Now, can we have the next person who may have raised their hand to speak?
Yes, Mayor, bringing in David Moll.
Please go ahead and I do want to make certain you heard my announcement.
Definitely heard your announcement. Just waiting for that clock.
There you go.
Perfect. Thank you. And I wanted to thank the council for their passion on trying to solve hard issues like housing. I just have a few comments about the study session that you just had and I that you guys discussed around the potential reallocation of lodger tax. First off, as we know, we are a tourist community. Tourism accounts for 30% of our jobs directly or even more indirectly as the dollar spent circulates around. During COVID-19 lockdown, locals alone did not get the businesses through. It was when we could open, there wasn't enough takeout or gift cards that could allow for a business to sustain itself. Just ask any business, when was the turning point of getting through or around COVID? And it was when tourism could come back. We still have single lane traffic downtown, pump bump outs. The fallout of COVID is still very much around. As a local, I also know that if I want a dinner reservation, maybe I make it two to three days out. We have the luxury of institutional knowledge that tourists don't. If a local complains that they can't get a dinner reservation on a busy weekend, my thoughts is to give the business to the restaurant on a slower day. You should, and you should do that by now and know that you should, you know, go out and make a reservation on a reservation. On the other hand, if they want to assure that they could never get in, then stop sustainable tourism marketing, reallocate it. And then that business will certainly be drastically impacted on whether or not that that individual can enjoy their restaurants that we, we come to really enjoy in our area. Not to mention, it's too soon. It's just passed. Attempting to dismantle the current allocation is just a waste of resources. The proposed discussion about reallocation could generate around maybe 350,000 at this time. This is just simply not enough to solve our housing crisis. How much was spent just on that survey alone? If we end up trying to reallocate lodger's tax down the road or even now, the funds that we're going to get siphoned off just won't make a drastic enough impact. I do agree with Counselor Baxter and the other counselors that agreed with her and saying that let's look at the bigger picture and see if we can find a dollar amount to fix and move the needle that we can really truly impact workforce housing. I would also support a dedicated tax directly impacted solving the housing crisis versus impacting sustainable tourism marketing. Unless this is a tactic to piecemeal together a budget, then I would support a dedicated tax towards impacting housing. Durango's bear, Durangans bear the burden to help fix the issue, whereas lodger's tax is not even a tax that the locals pay. We've all enjoyed housing price increases when we go to sell, but we don't realize the impact that that's had on affordable and tangible workforce housing. I hope that the community welcomes future visitor residents and leaves the door open behind them when they move here. Thank you, council, for your time.
Thank you, David. We have the next person who's raised their hand, please.
Yes, Mayor, next we have Jack Lawell, Lawellin, sorry.
Jack, let's get the clock, welcome and let's get the clock up. Thank you. Thank you, Jack. Please go ahead. Jack, you need to unmute yourself or can the, thank you. There we go. Jack, you need to unmute yourself or can the, thank you. There we go.
You keep, for once I'll be on time. Uh, thank you, Mayor and councilors for all you do for the community. I'm Jack Lawell. I'm the CEO of the Durango Chamber of Commerce. As councilors, you have to prioritize the projects and programs and solutions that aren't easy, and you all have to make tough decisions. We can all agree that there are critical challenges facing our community, including the affordable housing issue. This is one reason the regional Regional Housing Alliance was reestablished in collaboration with the Economic Alliance. Um, we look forward to the collaborative efforts that uh these organizations and the housing department with the city will be working together on. So thank you for your take for, thank you for taking the holistic approach and finding a funding solution for affordable or workforce housing issues. Durango Chamber of Commerce, we are here as a resource as well as helping as we navigate through a process finding a viable solution. Keeping in mind that tourism, as people have said, is a large part of our economic driver and the auxiliary businesses from this industry are also a key contributor to our local economy. We do appreciate your healthy discussion earlier today, and we are grateful to have Mayor Pro Tem Yusef as an active member of our chamber board. So thank you again for your time, and I'd like to also welcome Mr. uh Tuttel to Durango. And I appreciate all of you and all the work you do, and also thank you to our city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack, and thank you for being under time, uh on time and under time. Um, next, please.
Yes, we have Catherine Wagner.
Catherine, please, um, there we go. Looking for the clock and let's get started. Thank you.
Hi all, I'm also um speaking regarding lodgers tax. I listened to the city council meeting earlier and I appreciate the rich thoughtful communication that everyone had. I have a little bit of a different angle. I do fully support Visit Durango and um I want to just make sure that council and the public are fully informed when they're discussing this real allocation measure. Visit Durango not only provides tourism dollars, but they also provide phenomenal marketing grants for our local businesses and our creatives and our local economy that goes to more than just, you know, broader advertising. And I feel the study um did not reflect that properly. Um, also with regards to broader issues like transportation and housing, through the lodgers tax arts and culture fund, we are seeing tremendous programs being proposed. Um, Mayor knows where the you mentioned transportation specifically. One of the projects that got funded through lodgers tax was a full transportation equity study that looked at bus stops and then and with their funding, they put in twenty four, around twenty four bus stops. Beautiful uh protective metal covering to make it safer for, you know, tourists and local people, but it also looked at where these bus stops should be. Um, so I just want to make sure that everyone has the this sort of macro picture in mind in terms of what both tourism and arts and culture providing the community. Um, also, I am, you know, grateful that the ballot measure uh was postponed. But we are putting together an economic impact study, and I just wanted to make sure everyone was fully aware of that because we would love to work with city staff to make sure you all are armed with the, you know, up to date information as well. So whenever this does come up for discussion, we'll be able to really look at these robust, comprehensive facts and see the jobs and, you know, the professional development that's been created with these programs. So I just want to say thank you all, and I look forward to working for you as we, you know, continue on.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you. Uh, do we have anyone else who's raised their hand?
Yes, Mayor, we have Jack Turner coming in right now.
Hi, Jack, welcome. We'll get the clock restarted. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Uh, hi, thanks for letting me speak, and I just want to let you know that I I watch your meeting this afternoon, and this survey to me is no different than the polling national politicians do to create an outcome rather than understand an issue. It's designed to pit sustaining our hospitality industry against affordable housing. And this is done by emitting or minimizing information that's vital to an informed decision. Of course, people want affordable housing. Explaining the impact of a major budget shift could never be accomplished in a survey. There's no way to describe uh the competitive nature of destination markets and why visitors don't just show up because we happen to be here. There's never a thoughtful or informed explanation of just how many people feed their families or their passions by working in the hospitality and recreation business. The campaign of disparate jobs or entry level, part time, seasonal, or what some elite is called low skilled is disappointing, and it's been going on for years. It's unrealistic to think that most of these folks who are current residents could or would want to change their life to be a software engineer. Never have I heard council discuss how many full time managerial executive and well paying jobs are in hotels, restaurants, retailers, recreational attractions and support businesses. It's huge. And their contributions individually as businesses, the economy, local schools, Fort Lewis, and the community nonprofit organizations are never given in context of the criticism. It's dismissed that lodgers taxes paid in addition to, on top of the normal sales tax, property tax, business fees and wages, which are substantial. The industry is not a bunch of slackers. They pay more than is expected of uh of other industries. There are many backstories and nuance to the history of the lodgers tax, and the origin is that local leaders of the industry proposed a tax on themselves. The purpose was so that we could be competitive with other destination markets and so that the smaller players could be promoted along with companies like Pregatory, the train, Mesa Verde, and the big hotels. For four years, I watched some of you vilify tourism as if it's business owners, contractors, suppliers, and most importantly, employees are net burden to the public, and they're not. Our hospitality and recreation businesses, their operators, promotion promotional programs, economic impact are complex and fragile. We all learned from the pandemic uh that things we took for granted can be upended at a moment's notice. The big shame is is when such wounds are self inflicted. And right now, there's a bunch of know it all hot heads in Washington prepared to wreak havoc on other complex systems with decisions trotted out as populist tropes. Please don't make that same mistake here by reducing the promotional funding that our recreation hospitality industry needs to remain competitive. Affordable workforce housing is a huge issue and a priority. But this measure isn't the medicine needed, and it's false to tell people it is. If you want to get serious about a ballot measure to assist with affordable housing, as others have said, give voters the opportunity to be bold and vote on a small in- uh increase the general sales tax or other revenue source that everyone contributes to instead of targeting one segment of our community. That's how you raise some serious funds and I'll support you wholeheartedly on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you. Uh, next on the list?
Yes, next we have Jenny Roberts.
Good afternoon, councilors. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. And like so many others in the room, I would like to express my opinion on the reallocation of the lodgers tax. Uh, I'm wearing several hats today. I'm here as the general manager of the Hampton Inn and a representative of the lodging industry. I'm also addressing you today as a longtime resident of this community. And as both, I am extremely concerned by this proposed decision. I was living in Denver in nineteen ninety three when the action was taken by the state to defund tourism to Colorado. The effects of that decision were crippling, not only to the tourism industry, but also to Denver and the state as a whole. And we are still dealing with those long term effects today as a state. We were not able to regain the lost market share until two thousand and fifteen, and that lost market share came at a cost of over two billion dollars. I cannot imagine the destruction that would ensue should we happen on a smaller scale to make that decision here in Durango. We all enjoy our restaurants, our breweries, galleries, trails, et cetera, that go along with the quality of life that we enjoy here. If you proceed with your decision to reallocate funding away from tourism marketing, that quality of life for all of us, both locals and tourists, will be greatly diminished. Counselor Yusef mentioned mentioned this afternoon that she had heard from friends and constituents that they were not able to get into restaurants because of the number of tourists. Reduced marketing dollars will result in less sustainable tourism efforts, and that favorite restaurant may not be able to stay afloat in the off season. Again, the quality of life that we value so deeply here in Durango is a direct result of tourism. Therefore, I join in adding my voice and asking you not to rush into this decision. At the very least, it should be postponed, and you did make that decision today, and we greatly appreciate that. We need the time to better educate ourselves on the effects that this would have. We certainly do not want to share the legacy of the state of Colorado. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Um, next on the list, who people who raised their hands?
Yes, next we have Jasper Welch.
Great. Jasper, please unmute yourself.
Um, thank you very much, Mayor. And I see the time clocks going, so it's like table topics at Toastmasters. Um, I appreciate the council and their leadership, uh particularly on the affordable housing side of things. Uh, we probably had more things happen the last two to three to four years than we've had in a long time. And we've had actual um housing solutions, I think between the RHA and what they've done on uh adding staff plus uh what you've done on on the city uh staff. I met Ava and she's very talented. Uh, and so you're to be commended for that. Uh, the second thing is, uh, while it's a significant issue, I think we need to be careful that we don't, and I think stepping back and taking some time on this is appropriate. Postponing it because we don't want to pit our tourism sector against affordable housing. It's kind of a false choice. And I think really what we need to do is look at, the housing issue is much larger than um small funding sources. Um, I think that things that have happened since twenty twenty one, when our lodgers tax was modified. Um, one would be the Colorado uh Affordable Housing Fund. Uh, that housing fund is going to generate a hundred and thirty five million this year and two hundred and seventy million next year. And because Durango, through the leadership of the council, working with stakeholders, working with the alliance, uh because you have an infrastructure of both staffing and creative solutions, um, you're in a position to actually compete for that funding. And I think you're going to be competing for that funding in a much better way than uh maybe some of the other uh communities are not as well prepared. Um, and finally, uh discretion is the better part of valor. And I think postponing this and stepping back and particularly getting the stakeholders involved. Um, I think anytime that we inadvertently pit community members or industries or citizens or stakeholder groups against each other, I don't think that's really what the council intended. And I think that stepping back and trying to look at this uh solution for what it needs to be. And finally, uh Will Rogers was attributed to a saying uh that for every problem, there's a solution, and it's short, simple, and wrong. And sometimes stepping back, when you have a complex problem, and I have to be a little bit careful being in the consulting practice, I kind of enjoy the complex problems. Um, but they're harder to solve, and they're going to need every resource we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasper. Um, do we have anyone else who's signed up to speak?
Yes, Mayor, next we have someone who is in here as Zoom License Three. I'll let them speak their name.
If that's me, it's Yarun Van Thien. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, a lot of what I was going to stay to say, um, a lot of what I was going to say has been said already. I did want to point out that the uh however you allocate the lodgers tax, the the way it is it is uh allocated now, forty five percent of it goes towards a lot of things that not only touch on the tourism aspect of living in this town, but also on quality of life for those who do live here. And uh so, for example, uh, marketing for uh tourism to the off season is specifically designed to alleviate some of the high season problems and spread things around as well as to provide support for businesses year round to have tourism dollars coming in. But the other thing is that those quality of life things like the fourteen percent that goes towards um creative pursuits. Uh, I mean, for example, I I'm the uh Executive Director of Stillwater Music. We employ thirty two musicians who want to live here, do live here, they play for the tourists, they play for the locals, they live here year round, and those dollars, there are few, it's only fourteen percent, but those dollars have really made a difference in terms of people being able to be here as creatives and to uh to be successful uh and make a living as creatives and live in this community. Um, and so I just wanted to say that there is a quality of life aspect that is year round that is also funded out of those lodgers tax dollars. It doesn't just go towards tourism, and I'll yield back the rest of my time.
Thank you so much. I believe you said your first name was Harun. Thank you. Um, do we have someone else on the?
Yes, Mayor, we have, we have Brian Lundstrom. I'm bringing him in now.
Great, thank you. Hi, Brian, please, um.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Fantastic. My name is Brian Lundstrom, and I wear multiple hats. Uh, I am the Director of Sales at Skydome Senior Resort as well as the current Chair of Visit Durango and um not to echo what everybody else has said, but I do want to say that um I am very happy that you guys have decided to push off on reallocation. Um, I want to give you a little narrative as to why I think that that is a good idea. I have been in the hospitality industry for just over twenty years. Um, I started off as a bellman in that industry. Worked my way up to uh be front office supervisor, then front office manager, director of rooms, uh went into sales, and now I'm a director of sales. That has taken me twenty years to do. Uh, but over the course of that twenty years, I gained valuable experience. And in this industry, if you hamstring it by not allocating the funds to marketing, you will hurt over three thousand plus hospitality workers in the Durango area. Um, those people will suffer not, right now, you're having a hard time finding housing. Those people won't be able to afford the housing that is available because there won't be the tourists here to pay their paychecks. Not only them, how many galleries are on Main Avenue that would close because the tourists aren't coming anymore? I I live here. I've lived here for the last eight years. I grew up in a very small town in New Mexico called Corales. Uh, there's only maybe five thousand people there when I grew up there. Now there's ten thousand people. It's much different uh than when I grew up there. But we got to change with the times. Places do grow, places do change, and we have to change as uh as is required by that. Um, as people move into this area, they decide that they don't want some of the tourists. Well, they were tourists at one time as well, most likely, you know, I I grew up coming here, visiting the train, going to Perg, things like that as a tourist. When my wife and I had the opportunity to move here, uh, we decided to move here. She works for uh an engineering firm here. I will tell you this. Most hospitality workers that are in management make more money than they do at her engineering firm, and that's just the way it is. Hospitality workers are able to make good money in this area if we allow them to have the clientele to come in and visit those restaurants, visit those hotels, take care of the people. So um, I will go ahead and give back my last twenty seconds, but thank you all so much for deciding to postpone the reallocation and look into it more holistically. I do appreciate that, and have a wonderful evening. Thanks again for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone else who's raised their hand?
No, Mayor, no one else has indicated that they'd like to speak.
Great, thank you. Um, Ben, have we heard from um Todd? Are we able to swear him in?
Not yet, Mayor.
Okay, please do keep us uh with an update on that, and in between time, we will, we will work in that swearing in, or if necessary, come up with a an alternative plan. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we have city operational's updates. We have an update on services currently available at the Manasuit Kitchen. City Manager Jose, would you like to provide an introduction of this? And I believe will Ann Morris be speaking?
Uh, Mayor and Council, first of all, uh, I'll update this, but before I uh start this uh item, I think when we look at city operational updates, uh, I do want to give a special uh thank you to our streets workers out there right now who have been plowing uh the streets the past uh four or five days, twenty four hours, twelve on, twelve hours off. Uh, just the ability for them to do that allowed me to have the opportunity to come to work uh this morning. So just on part of us, just want to say thank you also to our Parks and Rec staff. They also do snow plowing for some some of our public sidewalks and our trails, uh waking up early in the mornings to get those accessible. So as we look at operational updates, I thought it was appropriate to give them a big thank you and to let them know that we are thinking of them. Now, for uh this operational update, uh, this does come from the uh city council study session. Uh, not this one last uh this afternoon, but the one prior uh where I believe it was uh Mayor Pro Tem Yusef had asked about just an operational update in regards to the services that Manna offers and as well as kind of what their lease states of the services that they are going to offer. So Chief Brammer uh is going to provide that. He has been in contact with Ann Morse of Manasuit Kitchen to make sure that the information we are providing is accurate. So with that, I will pass it over to Chief.
Chief.
Thank you, City Manager.
Chief, just for one minute, I'm, I do want to say, Jose, I'm sure all of council is totally appreciative of the folks. Chief, just for one minute, I I do want to say, Jose, I'm sure all of council is totally appreciative of the folks keeping those streets open and sidewalks open. So. I want to just speak as the mayor, but I I'm sure I have the backing of everyone. Thank you to those folks. You've been out there. We, I hear you in the wee hours. Thank you. Chief, please go ahead. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, uh, Member of City Council. I'm Bob Brammer, I'm the Chief of Police and. I'll be providing the update tonight uh from the last study session regarding the services that Manna currently provides. As uh they also pertain to what the lease agreement was from two thousand and twelve, which was the original tent of the last agreement. Um, I do have a PowerPoint present or provided here. There we go. So I'll be asking for the uh slides to be moved forward as we as we present this. So again, it's just a update on the services Manna provided. And if we go to the next slide, please. Next one, please. Okay, thank you very much. So Madam Mayor and uh Mayor Pro Tem Yusef, I think you believe you were the one that stated the question last time of wanting to know. What services are currently being offered and how that is in correlation with the two thousand and twelve lease agreement? Um, so what I've done is I I've been in contact with Dan Morris, the Director of Manna. And we've spoken at length in regards to current services um and how that's kind of transformed. Into what uh they're serving today. And I also have current numbers as well. Um, if the council would like to understand how much of a service this is to the Durango community um and elsewhere within the region of La Plata County. So Manna was formed in nineteen eighty-six and the last agreement that uh it was entered into the city with Manna was in two thousand and twelve. And I've listed those uh services on the left side there of what those actually were as they were dictated at that time based off the need which was uh wanted within our community. So they were serving a breakfast, a lunch, Monday through Friday and a brunch on Saturday and Sunday. And they were serving evening meals on Wednesday in a cafeteria style setting at the uh at the center itself. They provided shower and laundry facilities. They had uh information, reference supporting, support services and counseling services. And they provided emergency food and to-go boxes to uh people in need. They also provided bus tokens, diapers and hygiene supplies. And they had periodic medical clinics and dental vouchers for those who needed those as well. There's also emergency lodging vouchers that were provided um through Manna by the Red Cross um for our our local hotels and motels within the area for those in need. They also had a clothing, a food bank and haircut vouchers for those. And they also collect uh and distribute mail services. For those that are in need at the Manna site itself as well, um for those that are experiencing homelessness. And uh since that time in two thousand and twelve, Manna's had to transform itself based off of the pandemic. And also learning through the strategic plan that was entered into um between the city council or between the city Durango and the county. Um, of what services the uh the people of this area particularly need. So when they looked at that and they learned what those uh services were, they kind of transformed some things. And again, some of this has to do with the pandemic and ramifications of that as well. Currently, right now, it's a non cafeteria style setting. Um, they've actually transformed the interior of that building into a food pantry. And they uh distribute food that way to those in need. At no cost to any of the people that that come and take advantage of those services. Um, and they still serve meals. And they serve those as to-go meals and they're served Monday through Saturday, nine AM to one PM. They also have a community refrigerator, um which is outside and has sack lunches in it, and those are for Sunday anytime after hours for those that 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 need those services as well, um that are hungry. They have the food market, as I mentioned, um which is all donated food um to Manna and people can come and go and they can shop there as needed. And that also has more than just food. It also has other services um such as hygiene supplies and uh other other hygiene products if people need them. They still provide uh mail services. They have ID assistance for those that are in need. Uh, they provide shower vouchers. They have housing. And other uh assistance through prescription assistance. They still provide bus tokens and vouchers and computer access um and so on and so forth. And then their hours are also being extended throughout the day for counseling services. Um, so those are really kind of the services they provide now. Um, it's still within the mission scope of the lease agreement. And um if you would like, I can also share some of those numbers if you have specific services that are uh that are being requested, but as of two thousand and twenty-two. They basically served eighty-five thousand meals uh to community members within within the area, which is a slight uptick from the year before. But it's about uh thirteen thousand less than what was served uh the year prior in two thousand and twenty. So if there's any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counselor, questions for the chief?
Thank you so much for that update. Um, Chief Brammer, I really appreciate you taking the time. Um. And so it does sound like I, you know, just to confirm, they do have to-go meals Monday through Saturday, you said? And um, okay, great. And then um, but no warming shelter being offered currently, correct?
No, but it does sound like they're going to um establish uh like a a tent, a warming tent. At some point where people can gather while they are picking up and take advantage of the services at Manna. And then that also could be a gathering point during the summertime, um which could extend their their other uh counseling and other services as well.
Great. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. Thank you so much.
And Mayor, um, I, this is Ben in the council chambers. Um, I do have an update. I believe our municipal judge Sarah Law is in the attendee list.
This is Todd Norvell and good evening. I'm actually borrowing Sarah's computer. I hope you don't mind. And then sorry for the confusion.
No, no problem. Um, I believe Ben is the person who will be swearing you in. And we can do this virtually, so um I'm going to turn it over to Ben. Thank you. And we're glad that you could uh make it and. Again, we changed this to total virtual based on the storm, so not everyone may have heard that. Thank you. And we look forward to working with you, Todd. Ben, please, please handle the swearing in.
Thank you. And Mr. Mr. Norvell, we can go ahead and uh do your oath of office. So if you wouldn't mind, you can raise your right hand.
It's right.
I state your name.
I, Todd Norvell.
Do solemnly declare.
Do solemnly declare.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Durango.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Durango.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Municipal Judge for the City of Durango.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the um judge as judge of the City of Durango.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome, Todd. I believe there may be some paperwork as well for you to sign. Um, correct, Ben?
Correct. And Mr. Norvell, we'll catch up with you on on that paperwork uh probably in the morning.
Great. I'll see you in the morning. Thank you so much.
And welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, City Manager, let's go back. The next item is um. Update from Visit Durango. Is there anything that you want to preface this with?
Uh, no, Mayor, just Rachel Brown doing the third quarter of the twenty twenty-two activities for Visit Durango.
Very good. Rachel, are you? There you are. I see you. Wonderful. Uh, if you can unmute. There we go.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Nozworthy and Council. Thank you for having me this evening. Uh, for those of you who are viewing the meeting online and don't know me, I am Rachel Brown, the Executive Director. Of Visit Durango, our destination management and marketing organization. And I'm here to do one of my quarterly updates uh for Visit Durango, the Q through three update, July through September of twenty twenty-two. I'll start off with some uh La Plata County lodging overview. So as a reminder, we have. At this point, sixty-one total hotel properties in the county. That's a total of almost twenty-five hundred hotel rooms. Uh, we have one thousand four hundred and fourteen short-term rentals in the county, but. Uh, as we've talked about previously, and it's important to note, uh, that is not the same as the number in the City of Durango limits. That number, I believe, is about one hundred and twenty-five uh as of today. And our occupancy rate in hotels for Q three was eighty percent. Uh, that was about flat a year over year for Q three. And our short-term rental occupancy rate was sixty-six percent, which was also about flat from the previous year. Uh, in case you weren't aware yet, uh, we have received an award, the Green Destinations Award. Uh, this is a award contest where you submit case studies about. Uh, projects you're working on when it comes to sustainable tourism, regenerative tourism, destination management. So we did win a story for this and as part of this, uh, it's a very thorough process. They actually give you a a scorecard or um. Grading rubric for the different areas of destination management. You can see that on the right. And uh they want to make sure that any destination that could be getting this award is meeting certain standards. And so you'll see the majority uh we rated as sufficient or the green dot. Uh, and there were a couple where we were partially sufficient. And this is us, you know, just as a total destination. So uh Waylon from our team is working with Marty Poole on the city's team to address some of these items, but uh for. Your information, those items were sustainable business programs, natural heritage conservation and waste accumulation. Uh, I know we have a lot of metrics and data points that we talk about as the DMMO. Someone recently asked me, you know, if you could uh rely on one KPI or metric for how Visit Durango is performing as a DMMO. What would it be? And my answer would be the Tourism Sentiment Score. Uh, so as a reminder, this score is a measure of the destination's ability to generate positive word of mouth about its tourism offering. It is an aggregate score that focuses solely on online conversations. And content that reference or affect a potential traveler's perceptions of a destination's tourism offering. So I know that's a bit wordy, but essentially what this means is, does our destination deliver on its brand promise? And the answer based on our score is definitely a yes. Um, in Q three of last year, our ranking. Uh, we had a score of number thirty, which ranks us number twenty-nine in the entire world and number one in the state. Uh, and our score actually did go up uh forty-one percent compared to the previous quarter and up thirty-three percent over Q three of the prior year. Oops. Okay. Um, so someone mentioned earlier the Southwest Economic Outlook Forum that was at uh the fort recently. Uh, I'm not sure if any of you were able to attend, but if not, hopefully um you can find the recording online actually, and I would definitely recommend taking a listen. Um, I found the most insightful piece of the day to be a. Presentation from Dr. Nate Peach, who's a new Associate Professor of Economics at the fort. And he uh pointed out that for a period, uh, our region was technically declining in GDP, but it certainly didn't. Feel like that for those of us living in this community, working here. Um, and so he said, while the county experienced a GDP decline. The tourism industry has shielded us from that shrinking GDP. Uh, twenty-six percent of jobs is not a trivial number. So he basically said the reason that we weren't. You know, really feeling this decline was because the tourism economy is insulating us. Uh, he also pointed out, which is something that I like to remind people not to be pessimistic, but to be realistic that. There were a number of unique aspects of tourism in Durango that enabled the industry to thrive through the pandemic. But uh tourism will not continue to do as well as it has through the pandemic for a number of reasons, which. You know, I could elaborate on if you'd like, but um just something important to keep in mind that we need to. Keep this sector of our economy strong and healthy. I wanted to make sure you all were aware that we have wrapped up our resident workshops as part of this larger. Uh, listening to locals and stakeholder input process that Waylon has conducted. Uh, he did do five uh resident workshops throughout the county. Um. And he did those intentionally in different locations throughout the county. Uh, to make sure that we had, you know, a variety of people who felt like they wanted to contribute. Um, we did also offer translation services, ASL and childcare at most of those locations. To make sure that we could get a really representative sample uh of residents. I will, I think you all are aware it can be difficult to get. Uh, residents to participate in things like this sometimes. Um, so I'll say that we probably had under fifty total participants at those five locations, but. Um, it was still great to hear from people and, you know, to be honest, some of those that had a lower attendance. Uh, we were really able to dive deeper into some issues and get some more um anecdotal feedback. So. Uh, I hope you all are also aware that we have out our resident survey right now. Um. And we do plan to continue that through January. Right now, we have two hundred and forty-eight responses. Um, but we're hoping to get quite a bit more. So um we've worked with Tom. He's got it up on the website, but if you have any suggestions on other ways we can get the word out about this. Um, would definitely be open to that. And getting into some of our marketing in Q three, uh, these are some examples of some print ads that ran in various magazines. And these are some examples of content online and digital ads. And then I wanted to um give a shout out to our team who conducts. Uh, free marketing consultations for businesses in Durango and La Plata County. Um, these are, you know, it's. Only an hour, but it's kind of amazing what you can accomplish with a business in an hour. Um, if you're productive and stay on track. So our team will um talk through their marketing plan. Their budget, how they're spending their budget, pull up their social media channels, give some suggestions on how to make improvements there. And it's really amazing, you know, I'd encourage you to talk to any of these businesses about what they took away from this experience, but I think some of them have been able to. Drastically improve uh their marketing budgets and use of resources. And these are just a list of um. The businesses that did this in Q three. So some examples Cascade Express Car Wash, Tailwind Nutrition. Durango Art Center, Botanic Gardens, Durango Trails, and you see the rest of the list there. For uh PR, some of our notable coverage publications for Q three were. Uh, some biggies I'm sure you recognize, Travel and Leisure, Travel Waits, Time. Architectural Digest, Golf Digest, Thrillist and a number of others, but those are just some of the biggest names you'd recognize. And if you weren't aware, um. DALLA, the Durango Area Hospitality and Lodgers Association, has reformed. And Visit Durango is a sponsor of this new group and it's called the La Plata County Hospitality and Lodging Coalition. Uh, Jenny Roberts, who you heard from earlier, is the Chair of that group. And um our next meeting, which will be the second meeting of this group ever, uh, will be on January twenty-third at the Black Diamond Lodge. And uh we have different guest speakers planned for these events. Uh, this event, the coalition decided to do a panel discussion. And it is actually about lodger's tax. Um, I know you all made some decisions earlier tonight. But I have heard you all say at previous meetings that uh, you know, if you were considering moving forward with something like this. Hearing from the stakeholders would be a really important part of that process. And so, you know, I encourage you to join us. I'll make sure you all get the invite in your inbox as well, but um. It'll just be a healthy discussion and it'll give you an opportunity to hear from some of the stakeholders on that issue. And I won't go into many uh things we could talk about with the local event marketing. Um, not just the grants program, but the different programmatic events we put together like uh Holiday Station and Spoktober. But uh you all received an email from me previously with a link to the YouTube presentation on that. It's an hour-long presentation. And if you. And if you want to learn more about what we did with this program, I just encourage you to listen to that. And I will end with some metrics for the Durango Welcome Center. Um, our door count uh, was thirty-three thousand for Q three of last year and uh, that is not indicative of an actual drop of forty percent of people. We changed systems. And we now have a more accurate door counting device that doesn't measure people when they're leaving the building as well. So probably a too much information there, but that's the reason for the drop. And our uh, visitor information officers, they do track the number of people who actually ask for assistance uh, when they come into the welcome center, not just using the restroom, but actually ask for services. And so that was three thousand eight hundred and ten, which I believe averages to about forty a day. Just to give you an idea of what that daily amount is. And that is all I have for Q three. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you so much. I'm gonna look and see if anybody's raised their hand. I'm not seeing any hands raised, but I think just want to thank you for the update and appreciate you keeping us informed.
Always happy to help and yeah, thank you for your time.
Alrighty, thank you. Okay, next, we will go into a review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item Nine. Ben, may we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
Yes, thank you. Items eight point one through eight point three are approval of minutes items. Eight point one is approval of minutes from December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, City Council Special Meeting. Eight point two are the minutes from January third, twenty-twenty-three, City Council Study Session. And eight point three are the minutes from January third, twenty-twenty-three for the City Council Regular Meeting. Items eight point four through eight point six are discussion and possible action items. Eight point four is to consider a resolution changing the date of a future City Council Regular Meeting and Study Session. And to cancel a future City Council Regular Meeting and Study Session moving July fourth, the meeting on July fourth, twenty-twenty-three to July fifth, twenty-twenty-three. And deleting the December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three meetings. Eight point five is discussion and possible action authorizing the mayor to sign the Animus City Park Overlook Final as Built Platt. And eight point six is authorizing the mayor to sign the twelve oh one Main Avenue Units one oh two A and one oh two B Final as Built Platt.
Thank you. Does any councillor wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Since or none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ben, can you call the vote, please?
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Bossmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes, thank you. All right, we will go into public hearings. So the city council has previously directed staff to publish notice of public hearings for each of the hearings listed below. Um, as this is a virtual meeting, uh, we will take comments also, uh, and I don't believe there's anyone in the City Hall. We will take uh, comments after we hear kind of an explanation of this from the staff. Um, you'll be limited to three minutes again, and I'm hoping that the host can put that time up on the clock. Um, let's see, the first one is a public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement amendment with Agile Space Technologies at the airport. Tony, I believe you're online to speak to this.
Yes, Mayor, I am. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tony Vicari, Aviation Director at the Durango La Plata County Airport. Uh, while I'm starting up here, if I could ask the moderator to promote JD Dias and he is a representative with Agile Space Industries. And will be available to answer any questions that might be specific to uh, the business and the specific entity. Again, it's JD Dias.
Yeah, I got him.
Great, thank you.
I believe I've been unmuted.
Excellent. Right, Mayor and Council, as noted, this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing a lease amendment with Agile Space Industries at the airport. So just quick summary here, Agile Space Industries uh, does hold an existing ground lease at the airport on premises located northeast of the primary airfield. Uh, they use that uh, site currently to test liquid propellant spacecraft propulsion systems. Uh, that leasehold has been in place since two thousand and thirteen, so just over exactly a decade at this point. Um, and the reason for this item today is that Agile Space Industries is requesting to amend their existing ground lease to enlarge the lease premise uh, in order to facilitate the expansion of their test site infrastructure. The current leasehold is approximately seventy-six thousand square feet in size and the proposed enlarged leasehold would encompass about four hundred and fifty-one thousand square feet in space. That's an expansion of about six times. Um, with this expansion, Agile Space does anticipate a significant investment in the site over the coming years. Uh, to be able to augment the existing equipment and improvements that are currently onsite. Uh, and those investments are expected to allow Agile Space to continue to uh, complete current contracts and compete in a competitive market in addition to supporting a local workforce that's currently around six now and anticipated to expand in the future. Just a quick background on Agile Space Industry, led in two thousand and nine as AMPT or Advanced Mobile Propulsion.
Excuse me, uh, someone is unmuted. Um, can you please check, it might, Luke, perhaps it might be you? Could you please check?
Chambers, Mayor.
Is it in the chambers? I'm sorry. And folks just okay, it is in the chambers. Sorry. Can you please make certain everyone has their mute button on? Thank you. Please go ahead, Tony.
Yep, jumping back into it, as I noted, Agile Space was originally founded in, in Durango in two thousand and nine. At the time, it was called AMPT, Advanced Mobile Propulsion Test. Uh, they did rebrand into Agile Space Industries within the last several years as they expanded their business model. Uh, that includes an expanding capability for three D printed thrusters. Uh, and just an old background on the company here, they do specialize in design fabrication and testing of spacecraft thrusters. Uh, that's all accomplished here in Durango. Um, at the airport of note, in addition to the test site that we're talking to about today, Agile does also have a facilities lease for a twenty thousand square foot commercial warehouse and office space onsite at the airport uh, that's utilized to support the staffing and manufacturing and uh, background aspects of the business in particular. Um, and as part of all this, ASI does have committed contracts that um, are pretty exciting. We'll eventually put spacecraft on the moon projected in two thousand and twenty-five. So talking about the specific uh, leasehold here, for those that aren't familiar, you can see circled on the screen, the existing lease premise. Uh, these are due east of the airport terminal facility, which you can see on the left-hand side of the screen. Uh, the lease premises are on uh, non-aeronautical land located outside of any of the aeronautical use areas of the airport. However, they still on, are on airport-owned land. Uh, that infrastructure is off of County Road three oh nine A, as you can see circled there. The proposed lease premise would expand that as noted earlier by about six uh, times in terms of the sheer square footage impact. Uh, you can see on the left-hand side of the exhibit, the existing infrastructure that does uh, exist on that leasehold and the amount of expansion that's anticipated or requested rather to the north of that site to facilitate future expansion. And uh, as what's expected in terms of the actual development of the site, you can see depicted here. Uh, again, the existing infrastructure is on the bottom of the page and you can see the proposed expansion to the north. Uh, this largely encircles a or envelops rather and an expansion in terms of a new construction of an additional test pad. Uh, so these pads need to be separated uh, on defined intervals uh, to facilitate the testing and any kind of requirements needed for safety purposes. Uh, the construction would incorporate the laying of a foundation, grading, access road, parking, as well as the establishment of a test site infrastructure that is largely comparable to the existing test site. Uh, just allowing them to expand their capacity significantly on the footprint. Uh, looking just strictly at fiscal impact for the airport, uh, ground rent on that current lease, uh, leasehold is currently thirty cents a square foot annually. It produces ground rent of about twenty-three thousand dollars. Uh, the ground rent on the proposed expanded leasehold uh, would be decreased to sixteen and a half cents per square foot annually. Uh, however, due to the sixfold increase in the square footage, the annual rent would be increased to approximately seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, that decrease in the cost per square foot is the direct result of negotiations between the airport and Agile Space. Uh, the airport desires to have a contiguous uh, leased premise, uh, i.e. maximizing the amount of leasable land of the airport to make sure that it's put to beneficial use and maximizing rent, while of course, uh, Agile as a, as a lessee is interested in maintaining efficiency on that leasehold. Uh, ultimately, those negotiations resulted in this proposed sixteen and a half cent per square foot uh, leasehold cost and airport staff have researched comparable commercial land valuations to validate that the negotiated cost per square foot does represent a fair market value for the, the parcel. Uh, just from a regulatory and legal background, the airport layout plan, which is a guiding document for the uh, airport, which is registered with the FAA, does depict the area uh, that encompasses the lease premises as well as this expansion uh, as non-aeronautical in use, which would be consistent with both the current and future activity authorized in, in this lease agreement as well as the amendment that we're looking at today. Um, La Plata County Land Use Permit is active for the site and a permit adjustment has already been approved by the County Planning Director uh, for this expansion. The Airport Advisory Commission reviewed the proposed lease amendment and unanimously recommended its approval in its December two thousand and twenty-two meeting without any public comments provided. Uh, the interim city attorney has reviewed the proposed lease amendment and actual construction of the proposed improvements uh, does remain contingent upon final FAA airspace review, land release approval and environmental review. Uh, to wrap up, just a summary of the benefits of this uh, proposed lease amendment. Uh, this would produce additional long-term rent income for the Airport Enterprise Fund. Specifically, it diversifies revenue streams. Uh, our airport, like many, is dependent in large part on aeronautical revenue. Uh, aeronautical revenue drives the majority of revenue streams for the Airport Enterprise Fund. Um, non-aeronautical development such as what Agile is currently producing for the airport in terms of ground rent and would be expanded through this lease amendment, represents an opportunity for diversification for us to increase revenue streams in a manner that isn't subject to the same fluctuations that we see driven by aeronautical use and in particular airline revenue, which is really the predominant revenue generator for the Durango La Plata County Airport. Uh, secondarily, uh, regional impact or economic impact and job creation, we mentioned the sixty jobs that are currently created uh, or facilitated rather by Agile in the Durango area and the potential for expansion driven by this um, lease amendment and their subsequent expansion and investment. And then lastly, the strategic plan alignment with the effective infrastructure network goal. And then more specifically, the aviation strategy, if, as we mentioned earlier, increasing those revenue generation and diversification opportunities to make sure that the airport remains strong fiscally and can uh, firmly maintain its status as a fully self-sustaining enterprise fund. Uh, with that, that's all the background information I have. I'm happy to take any questions before the, the council entertains a public hearing.
Uh, actually, Tony, the way we'll proceed is we'll open the public hearing uh, and have folks speak, then we'll close the public hearing, then council will be able to ask questions of you uh, from their own preparation or from what they've heard. And then uh, ultimately, um, JD, we may, council may have questions of you as well, or you may be uh, called upon to address any questions that come up in the public hearing. So that's kind of the order of things. So on that note, I will, oh, no problem. We're so glad that you could be here. On that note, I will open the public hearing and ask our host if there is anyone, um, if there's anyone in virtually who's raised their hand. And Ben, can you confirm there is no one in City Hall who wishes to speak?
Uh, Mayor, I'm looking at it right now and it doesn't appear that anyone has raised their hand to speak online.
Okay, and there is no one in attendance at City Hall other than, than, than you and Mr. Tubal?
Correct, uh, just staff in here right now.
Perfect, thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing and open it up for council with questions or comments. And I'll look for raised hands. I'm not, I'm not seeing any raised hands, but I do want to make a comment, which is that um, uh, Councillor Buell, Baxter and I had the wonderful opportunity to visit Agile uh, technology, space technologies back uh, back in twenty-twenty-one, I think this summer. Put on our hazmat suits and got the whole tour. And uh, and we were just starting the lease negotiation, so I just want to commend Agile for the um, renewed, the growth that they're doing and Tony for your partnership with Agile Space um, Industries. We appreciate um, your partnership and we appreciate the impact that you have and that company has in our community. Is, is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that city, um, now hold on here. Uh, we already did the public hearing, so that we authorize the lease amendment with Agile Space Industries at the airport and consider the proposed ordinance attached heretofore under the introduction of ordinances section of the agenda. So I guess we don't actually need a motion for this.
I believe that's correct, uh, Mayor. So that, um, since there is an ordinance on this agenda, there's no action items specific to the hearing aside from the approval of the ordinance later on this agenda.
Thank you. I got, I got ahead of myself. No problem.
That's okay. I did the first thing when I read it too. The other thing is that um, City Attorney, uh, Tithel will need to give us um, ordinance numbers when we get to this.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right, let's now, um, okay, we are now going to go into the quasi judicial hearings. And the next one is item eleven point four. A public hearing to consider approval of the Mercy Regional Medical Center Plan Development Amendment at ten ten Three Springs Boulevard. And is that, is that Dan or Mark? Who's speaking on that?
Believe that and I, so I'm sorry, there I come back. Uh, Mayor and Council, I believe that it is I'm trying to pull up my agenda in the playbook.
I think it's Dan Armenta.
Dan, I believe it is Dan. Yes, yes ma'am, it is Dan.
I've just allowed Dan to speak, so he should be able to talk to us now.
I don't know if Dan can talk, but this is JD with Agile Space and I'm a little confused. Uh, am, am I, am I done? I didn't.
Yes, JD, I'll um, I'll pull you off as, as able to speak.
JD, we'll, we'll have a vote on the um, ordinance at a later part.
Okay, understood. Thank you, ma'am.
But we have no questions of you. So thank you. Thank you for being willing to speak.
We have to promote Dan to the panelist. Yeah, he, cause he's gonna present, so it's more than just talking, if you wouldn't mind presenting, putting him to panelist.
Yeah, I got him. Thanks.
Hey, can you guys hear me? Yes.
Yes, we can.
Can you see me or no?
No.
Can't see myself. Oh, yeah. The camera's on, but looks like you can't see me. Let me see if I can share my screen. Well, I don't know how important video is, but if you can hear me and see my screen, that's probably the most important thing.
Um, we can see the screen, Dan, and, and hear you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do have three applicants, I believe, that are on with me this evening. Um, Jeff Beardsley and Chris Lambright and David Solomon. Uh, they do have a presentation that they'd like to share with council, uh, once I'm complete or whenever is appropriate, Mayor. Um, but I'll dive right into it. Dan Armenta with the Community Development Department, and this is the Mercy Regional Medical Center Plan Development Amendment. Um, I guess one other point, I, I do seem to be losing my voice at a rather inopportune time, so I apologize for that. Um, if you need me to repeat anything, uh, let me know. I'll do the best I can. Uh, start with a summary here, so this is Uh, start with a summary here, so this is a proposal to modify an existing plan development agreement. For uh, the Mercy Regional, Mercy Regional Medical Center out of the hospital. Uh, to allow a up to eighty thousand square foot medical office building. Which would be built along the hillside north of the existing complex. The agreement was approved in two thousand four and it does provide for future expansions, but not in the location where the applicant is proposing the building. And the uh, agreement states that any additional development beyond what's uh, provided for requires a P D amendment in accordance with the L E D C requirements. Which is why we're before you here this evening. If the amendment is approved, the applicant will need to go through a major site plan review process, so that will include a public hearing for the planning commission. Uh, where the site will be reviewed in uh, much greater detail. Here's a context map showing the uh, P D, the whole P D outlined in red, so there's four parcels that are included in this P D. Uh, the big one is, of course, the hospital property, uh, which encompasses uh, much of the land within the plant development. And then on the north side is uh, the Mercy Apartments, a residential housing facility. Uh, this L-shaped structure is the existing medical office building. And then down in the southwest corner is Axis Health's uh, crisis care facility. And here's a zoomed in view of the area that is currently undeveloped, uh, that would be essentially where the new medical office building or uh, would be located. Uh, just want to highlight, there are some slopes, they're generally sloping from north to south. Um, there's also some adjacent residential development, of course, emergency apartments um, to the north. And then uh, the Confluence Town Homes, uh, this is Confluence Avenue here, if you can see my cursor. And these townhomes are kind of immediately to the east of where the, where the med- medical office building and, and the parking lot would be located. Uh, we'll look at a pro- proposed conceptual site plan here in a second, but the access will be coming off of. Uh, Night Horse Circle, which is the perimeter drive around the hospital. Here's the existing site plan that was approved with the P D back in two thousand four. And I wanted to show you this because these red areas that are outlined are areas where. Uh, future expansion has been considered and already pre-approved, pre-approved. Uh, the applicant has a, a really nice, a better rendering showing this. Um, but just to, just for council's context, um, the, this rectangle and then these two squares on either end of the medical office building. Are future expansions for more medical office building. This largest rectangle here is actually a proposed parking structure, a potential parking structure location. Feasibility of that location is kind of in question, given the slopes in that area. Um, but just to, so you're aware, these are the areas where the, the P D does allow for future expansion without this amendment. Um, here's the conceptual site plan as they have it, uh, at this point, actually, do, do you have a better one, which they'll show you, I believe as well. Um, couple of things I want to point out, um, first, you can tell, obviously, the parking area is quite substantial. Um, the, the footprint of the medical office building is, um, it's three stories, so the total square footage is eighty thousand square feet. I'm unsure of the exact footprint size, but it is a substantially sized building. Um, there are some existing soft surface trails that crisscross the property. Those will be impacted by this proposal and will need to be replaced, uh, in accordance with the conditions of approval that we're recommending. So this uh, dotted loop trail here is essentially where they're proposing to replace that. And again, I think they have a more advanced um, version showing uh, more trails on the, on the area. Um, one last comment on this, these two rectangles here on the left side are. Uh, the smaller one is dedicated open space through the P D agreement and the larger one is actually conservation easement. So those areas uh, are preserved permanently and will not be developed. Uh, just to touch briefly on some site considerations, um, I mentioned that hillside trail network that's going to be impacted by the development and will need to be rebuilt. Uh, there's also obviously going to be some substantial visual impacts to the neighborhoods uh, adjacent to the proposal. Um, so we think there should be a landscape buffer, uh, really along that eastern property line adjacent to land, uh, adjacent to Confluence Avenue. Um, where the townhomes are. Uh, we also feel a structure should be designed to blend into the terrain to the extent possible and uh, preserve as many natural features on the site as they can. And then finally, breaking up the parking areas and include extensive parking lot landscaping uh, with that large. Parking area as well, and, and again, just broadly, all of the ci- city site design requirements, which are substantial, will need to be met. Uh, through that site plan review process. Uh, just briefly on the comp plan and strategic plan, the proposal does conform with the comp. With the comprehensive plan, given that the uh, land use really is remaining consistent, doesn't change. And then secondly, the comp plan does broadly promote uh, ba- a balanced economy, then the development or retention of a mix of different enterprises. Uh, as for the strategic plan, proposal aligns with the A E O priorities. Uh, namely in that it supports business development and secondly, more specifically to this proposal, uh, the amendment. The uh, A E O priorities highlight the need to reduce barriers for established businesses that will encourage new investment. And that's really exactly what's happening here. Um, just really quickly on L E D C criteria, uh, the big one is the first bullet, there do need to have a two-thirds majority of the property owners within the P D consenting to the change. Um, so as I mentioned, there's four property owners, they have three of those, um, that's the hospital themselves, which are the applicant, of course. The owners of the medical office building and then the owners of the Axis Health property. Uh, they also need to broadly demonstrate that there's changes in um, market conditions that have occurred since P D was adopted. Um, also changes in city adopted plans, policies or regs. And um, finally, that the current conditions uh, in the market right now were not foreseen when the final approval was granted. Um, we'll touch on that in a little bit, but uh, really, you know, they need that area that's proposed for future development for parking purposes. Um, and so it doesn't really work that great for a new uh, development. In the opinion of staff and the planning commission, the proposed change does meet these criteria. Um, public comment, there's been a few that have come in in the last few business days, one which I do not believe has been provided to councils, I'll go into that one a little bit more detail. Uh, but more broadly, uh, there were, there's one that was in favor, uh, and then three that have either expressed concerns or are opposed. Um, the one that you did not receive uh, came in from a Judith Lance of three seventy-five Confluence Avenue. Uh, Ms. Lance wanted to convey that she purchased her home in twenty eighteen, it was intended to be her final retirement home located closer to family in a more low-key area. And this development would impact her lifestyle, namely in that she has issues with asthma and is concerned that the development of this hillside would create more dust and pollen. Which could exacerbate her condition. She's concerned that the rear alley could be used as possible access for the development or the traffic would increase along the alley. Um, she has concerns that a potential parking garage for the development would be possibly used or, or. Could be an area for increased crime or an area for the homeless to seek refuge. Uh, she's concerned that the development could impact her property value. Uh, she expressed that the rear valley facing the development is the only area that she has for tranquility on her property. Uh, that the undeveloped area does contain some natural areas and bike paths and walking paths. Uh, she does understand and appreciate the fact that Mercy provides ne- necessary medical facilities for the community. And hopes that Mercy can be a good neighbor and work to address the concerns of residents along Confluence Avenue. Um, just to touch on the planning commission's review of this proposal, there was some fairly substantial discussion. That focused uh, initially on the need to develop that hillside instead of those areas specified on the approved P D site plan. Uh, there was also substantial discussion on the visual impacts to the adjacent uses, uh, I think the size of the parking area was a substantial concern. The P C, the planning commissioners ultimately uh, did suggest that the applicant provide structural parking underneath the building. As a way to mitigate the size of that parking lot. The applicant, um. I, I thought, I don't know that they made all of the points that they intended to in that, in that hearing, but um, as a follow-up, they've really indicated that. That would be incredibly difficult for them to do. Um, however, they were, are willing to explore some other options that would kind of address planning commission's concerns with the size of the parking lot. Um, accordingly, they have requested that city council strike the condition that planning commission included. To uh, require, um, not require, it's a, it's a non-binding condition that planning commission recommended. Uh, but the, their condition was to strongly recommend including parking underneath the new building. They did submit a letter that really described their concerns, staff feels that their concerns do have merit. Um, I will let them speak to those concerns uh, in more detail. Um, but they were outlined fairly well in that written response that was included in the packet. Staff also feels that um, that letters uh, outline of seven project benefits that they plan to include. Those could be conditions of approval instead of what planning commission has recommended to include in terms of parking underneath the building. Um, so I'll let the applicant expand on that, but um, I think at this point. Um, staff is comfortable with the recommended motion. Um, and comfortable with striking that condition as recommended by the planning commission. Um, I think the motion, uh, motion on screen is the same as what you have in your packet, and I think this does cover that concern. Um, so, at this.
Thank you, Dan, a- actually, what we're going to do is we, I will open the public hearing. And see if there's any comment, close the public hearing, and then we'll bring the applicants in for their presentation. Because some questions may be raised uh, during the public hearing, that would also be best suited by them. After they do their, their presentation, we'll open it up to council for questions. So with that, I will open the public hearing and ask our hosts if anyone uh, virtually has raised their hand to speak.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I have a Jamie Matthews who would like to speak.
Jamie, thank you, and we will limit that to three minutes, um, please. And if the host can turn on the clock, that would be appreciated.
Get it up right.
Welcome, Jamie.
Thank you, can you hear me? Yes, we can. Okay, so I live on Confluence Avenue and I purchased one of the so-called affordable homes in Three Springs. And um, I understood that there was going to be a building built on that hillside behind me, however, I didn't understand the full impact that would have on. The value of my home and my community as a whole. Um, we are uh, a mixed-use facility and, and residential area with commercial, and I. I fully understand that, but I stand up and I look out of my bedroom window and I will see a three-story medical facility. With a sea of parking spots. And I cannot even over underestimate or overstate the impact that that has on. My health, the health of my child, the health of the people around me. And the overall access to just open vistas. And the La Plata Mountains and everything that we live in Durango for. Um, we really enjoy that free space, we walk out our backyard, we walk out, we cross the alley, we walk up there. We walk our dogs in the morning, we watch the sunset over that hill. And I really implore the city council to consider the fact that the affordable homes in Three Springs were built. With that as their backdrop. And I invested in my home in Three Springs uh, to better me and my daughter and our future. And I feel like our home values are going to be negatively affected by the building of this medical facility. And I think that's all I have to say on this, I just asked the city council to really think about the eighteen guidelines. And the views and the goals that were outlined in the Grand View Plan as of January fourth, two thousand and four, and stick with. Those values that the residents way back then saw were of the utmost importance, with number one and number two being. To protect Durango's natural resources and to protect our vistas and our land, because those are really the reason that we live here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jamie. Has anyone else raised their hand to speak during this public, public hearing?
I'm here, yeah.
Uh, no, Mayor, I don't have anyone else who's indicated that they would like to speak in the public hearing.
Very good, thank you, uh, with that, I'll close the public hearing, and then I believe it's Chris, Dave and Jeff. Who will be making a brief presentation. They will probably need to be promoted to panelists and share their presentation.
And what was the last name for Dave?
Uh, it's David Solomon.
Hello, this is Chris Lambright, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Uh, excellent, I, uh, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and, and Council, um. My name is Chris Lambright, I'm with Medcraft Healthcare Real Estate Development. Uh, we're the developer working with Mercy Hospital on this project. Um, as uh, Dan mentioned with me today, uh, Jeff Beardsley, um, with Boulder Associates and uh, David Solomon, the. Uh, Mercy Hospital CFO. Um, will also be speaking, but uh, I'm going to kick it off here, so. Um, you know, first off, I appreciate the council's attention to review uh, our P D amendment. And our goal with Mercy Hospital is to build a new medical office building. Uh, and ambulatory surgery center on campus. Uh, that is affordable and provides easy access for patients and physicians. And that, that is, that is the basic premise of, of, of why we've come to the table with an ask to amend. Our P D amendment. The, uh, the, you know, the current P D, um, you know, where it did show the medical office building, um. You know, is in a very congested area, and so by, you know, moving development a little bit further away, we're decompressing. Uh, some of the strains on the campus, um, and not adding more pressure. Uh, in that, uh, in those areas, and, and, and Jeff, and we've got some, some plans to show you, to show you that. Um. It, it also avoids creating um, some access issu- issues on campus. And with the location that we're proposing, uh, it creates an easily, an easily accessible. Surgery center and destination for patients uh, to know exactly where they're going when they do have procedures. Um, you know, we've been asked in the past, you know, what's, what's changed? You know, this, this P D was approved in two thousand four, what's changed? And I, and there is, there are several things, but I, I do want to say, you know, probably first and foremost is that. A surgery center was not considered as part of that, that, as, as part of that medical office building. You know, um. The, the, that, that alone, um. Changes the dynamics and, and the way healthcare is delivered today. Uh, from two thousand four, you know, you, you, you've, you've, I'm sure several people here listening and, and uh, that are part of this meeting have been to surgery centers that are. Independent of hospitals. Uh, that they're easy to get to, they're identifiable, identifiable, they're destination points. Uh, they're easy to get in, in and get out of. And that's what we're trying to accomplish here, and, and we've, we'll show you that a little bit more, um, when Jeff talks. The structured parking, uh, that's shown in the, in the existing P D amendment. Um, structured parking is very, very expensive, you know, I, I, I don't know. If you're familiar, but as far as range of cost, to build structured parking, you're going to spend twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars per parking stall to build it. Versus if you're building surface parking on the ground, it's like twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars a stall. So it's like ten times more expensive. And that's asking the hospital to invest ten times more money into an infrastructure. Instead of into providing healthcare services, hiring staff, providing the equipment and taking care of your community. So, you know, so Mercy, you know, owns obviously this private land to the north of the existing campus. It's undeveloped and it offers a lot of amenities free to the public, uh, to use their land for hiking and biking. And yet a portion of that land is, you know, available to be developed, uh, and. The area that we're talking about accomplishes the goals of creating a destination point. A surgery center that's separate from the hospital that people can identify. And it doesn't add any parking pressure to the existing campus. It provides easy access, it'll provide great wayfinding, people will drive onto campus and they will see. That that building's there, it's separate from the hospital, that they'll be able to get to it and get into it and get out. Uh, easily, and that, that's really important for people when they come, when they come for their healthcare services. And, and ultimately, it provides an affordable solution for what we're trying to accomplish. We, we take developing this land very seriously, we, we don't take the fact that we're going to be disrupting some of the trails lightly. We plan to be good stewards of the land and good neighbors in the community. And to, and to show that, and I'll, I'll, I'll talk high level here and Jeff will show you some, some, some diagrams. But we plan to rebuild the trails that are, that are disrupted from this development, and we plan to add trails to it. And we, and as part of our, you know, we've been thinking about this, and one of the things we would do early on in construction is build those trails, rebuild things. So that those things that are disrupted from this building, we want to get those back in place and operational as quickly as possible, so people can continue to use them. We're going to add benches and picnic tables within that area, giving people the opportunity to walk the trails, maybe have a picnic with their family. Uh, maybe sit down, watch that sunset, you know, uh, in the evening. And we're going to make sure we've got um, several access points, um, still to Confluence Avenue, which I heard was mentioned. And we're gonna make sure we've got, um, several access points, um, still to Confluence Avenue, which I heard was mentioned. You know, so those people that have this right next to them, we are planning to have a trail and several connection points there for them to use. Um, we're also planning to have some mountain bike parking. And we're, we're, we think we should install, uh, some trail signage, you know, to help, um, to help people understand what the network of trails that are there, where they're located, you know, where they might be going as far as a route, and maybe the difficulty of that route, you know, so they can make some choices along the way. We plan, we do plan to build a parking lot, but we're planning to build it so it's not like a sea of parking like you would see at a lot of major retailers. That's not our intent, and that's not what the end product that we planned to, uh, to, to have. You know, we're going to have numerous landscaped islands that are large landscaped islands within the parking lot to break up that quote-unquote sea of parking. And we're still going to leave a, a good amount of undeveloped land uh, for patients, staff, and our neighbors to use. Um, so the planning commission, you know, approved the P D amendment uh, with that condition to build the level of parking below the building to help reduce the amount of hard surface area. And as Dan mentioned, we did draft and send a letter to the city a, a couple of weeks ago, um, primarily outlining a number of significant challenges that this would bring to the project. And there are solutions to all of those challenges, but they're extremely expensive and cost prohibitive for this project. Mercy, they wanna build and provide additional affordable healthcare services to the community. And this amendment will help do that. Therefore, as Dan mentioned, our request is for the city council to approve our P D amendment without requiring parking under the building or any structured parking. Um, with that, I'm gonna pause and, and transition this to, to Jeff to share maybe his screen and the presentation materials. Uh, I'm obviously gonna be staying on here and available for questions and comments, uh, uh, as we go on here.
Hello, everyone. Um, thank you, Mayor and Council for your time. Um, I'm gonna share my screen if that's okay. Give me one second. Screen one. Share. Okay. So as Chris mentioned, my name is Jeff Beardsley, I'm with Boulder Associates. Uh, we are the architect for the project today, and, um, you know, we've been, we were founded in nineteen eighty-three with the sole focus of designing for healthcare, and that continues today. That's all we do. Um, and so I'll expand on two of, uh, two aspects of Chris's presentation tonight, and just go into those with, with greater detail. Um, first to modify the need to modify the P D, and the second, um, related to the challenges that, that he mentioned. So on your screen right here is, is that same diagram that Dan shared. I've rotated it to be true north so that, um, we can make sure that you all, um, see the, see the site in exactly the same format. Um, in all of our documents. Um, as Dan had outlined, areas in green on the project, on this diagram, are areas where the original P D did, did, um, uh, facility, or suggest there were areas for potential future expansion of the medical office buildings. Um, both in terms of an extension onto existing buildings, but also as a freestanding structure. Areas in purple are areas where the P D envisioned potential future hospital expansion. And, um, the, the sort of orange color is that, um, potential parking garage. Just for context, the blue that we've added at the north, that's where this proposed P D, uh, would be situated. Um, if it is approved, uh, through the council here tonight. Um, and so as we go to the next page, what you're seeing here is just the areas, um, of the parking that are existing on site and their relative demand. So orange being areas of high demand and red being even higher, the highest areas. What you'll notice as I go to the next slide is that, um, these areas overlap. So every condition that we have where we might be expanding, um, where the P D allows, makes some parking condition even worse, either by both eliminating parking and increasing the demand, or, um, by adding in places where there is already high demand. Um, and so for that reason, um, you know, the, an additional amendment to the P D to allow for development in another area is, is, uh, is needed. Um, secondly, in our letter, we outline the number of different challenges provided by, that, that are created by um, the need to park under the building. And again, as, as we've understood from Dan, you know, that was a request of council that we consider. Um, in our letter, we outline the many reasons why, um, we don't feel it's appropriate in this instance. And so to cover them briefly, um, the imaging center has extremely heavy equipment down the order of tens of thousands of pounds. Um, again, as Chris mentioned, these can be mitigated, but, but, um, you know, not very effectively. Um, the equipment is sensitive to vibrations, um, that is made worse by putting it elevated on floors rather than on the ground. Um, and also having occupied space under it increases the shielding needs for both equipment and for people. Um, additionally, the surgery center has similarly sensitive equipment, um, depending on different kinds of cases. And so that, having them elevated on the floor has similar, um, problems. It also adds complexity to emergency, emergency systems, um, such as power and life safety to have a surgery center of that type on an elevated floor. It also, um, makes discharge and access to that surgery center for patients and their family members more difficult. Um, and then in addition, parking under the building also creates confusion on how people access the facility and, and increases travel distances, both of which are difficult things for patients with mobility issues like the patient population here. Um, people coming in for surgery, for imaging, and orthopedic visits. Um, so underbuilding parking would definitely drive the need to increase the building height or to remove a, a very, very large quantity of earth from the site. Um, and as you can see, or as, as we've discussed, and, and something that I'll share in a moment, we have always shown the building as being sort of built into the hillside in turn, in, in part to help mitigate the concern and the visual presence of the building on the site. And so that would be made worse by, um, by building underneath it. Um, and, and removal of the ground, a removal of earth under the building, uh, would come at great costs and, and increase wear and tear on all the public roadways that would be, um, you know, in the vicinity of this kind of trucking. Um, so moving on from the challenges and just to share with, with you all where we would like to go with the project and why, the ways in which we're trying to mitigate planning commission's concern, we're just sharing some more, some additional site plan information with you all today, tonight. Um, and so since our meeting with the planning commission, we've been adjusting our plans, um, to, to, to help mitigate those, those questions and concerns raised by the planning commission. Um, and so we just wanted to go through those today. So first, we're, we're, um, planning to reduce our parking ratio um, for the project. So this is actually a smaller percentage than what we would have shared with planning commission at the time. That was our first early sketch, uh, uh, of the project. And so what, where before we were initially planning ratios of about five per thousand, we're reducing that to four, four to four and a half, somewhere in there, that's some stalls for, per square foot. Um, we're also, we've also significantly increased the size and the quantity of landscape islands in the parking areas um, to increase the greenery that's distributed throughout the site. Um, one thing you'll notice in this plan is that there is not any access, vehicular access provided off of the alley in Confluence Ave. And so as that came up as one of the public comments, um, there should be no additional traffic in, in those areas. Um, all the traffic that, uh, would be arriving at the site would be, uh, arriving from Night Horse Circle, which is the ring road around the hospital. Um, and so, you know, we hope that that's, that's been made clear in, in the, in the drawings. And one item that I would share that we all came to this project with was a desire to to help buffer the residential area to the east. So there is no, there is no setback or easement or anything on the east side of our property. But there is a, is a large distance that we've left between the beginning of this new development area and the existing alley. Um, that, that's been done with intention so that it can provide enough area to provide birmingham, to provide additional landscaping, and to provide a trail, um, along, along that side. We've discussed this with Dan in the past, um, and we've talked about the required percentage of buffering that we need in this area. The idea here is that we help to mitigate any visual impact of the development to the residences. That includes things like, um, low screening and birmingham to help with, um, lights, you know, car lights that may be driving around the parking lot a- and reducing their impact on the residences. Um, we've, as Chris mentioned, we, uh, we have reconfigured the trail network that is located to, i- in this area. Um, the P D does allow for that, but doesn't outline it, um, you know, what that needs to look like. Um, so it, it requires us to maintain the loop trail, which we're showing here in diagram form. And then, uh, we've also been in discussions with Dan about the desire from staff to connect that down to the um, pedestrian areas that, that, um, are the pedestrian sidewalks that border Night Horse Circle. And so you'll see those, those trail connections that come down on either side of the site. Um, we hope to enter, we hope to minimize interruptions on the trail by being able to construct that as quickly as possible during the, during the construction process, such that it can still be utilized, um, even when, uh, even when the building is under construction. Um, and, and as Chris also mentioned, um, it's a little hard to see, but there's a number of areas where we've identified places for benches distributed around the trail network, places for, um, uh, for picnic areas distributed around the trails, uh, for, for bike parking, both, both adjacent to the hospital entry, or excuse me, the, um, the building entry points. Um, and then also adjacent to the, to the trail network, because we do know that folks use this to, to, um, commute back and forth to work. Um, so it's, um, and then I would share one more, one more diagram here, um. At the very end of our presentation, just to cover, just to give a set, a sense for the scale of the project. Um, as we discussed, we've, we've intentionally set the building sort of into the hill. So first story or so will be below ground on the backside. That actually works really well for the kinds of program that the hospital plans here. So for the surgery center and imaging departments, those do not need extra windows and, um, um, uh, daylight in the same way that medical office clinics do. And so that actually works pretty well for, for the uses here. But this gives you a sense for, um, you know, to the left-hand side up the hillside, that's, that's the area that we envision as remaining undisturbed landscape with trails, and we hope to increase that, you know, the, the prominence of of benches and picnic areas. To the right-hand side, as it transitions from the building to the parking area, um, you know, adding lots of greenery and landscape islands, and then um, and also as it steps down the hillside to Night Horse Circle to where the existing hospital is, um, we have sort of vegetated areas of, of some, some retaining walls that we have, that we need um, to make up the slope difference. So, um, I think that, that brings us to the end of my portion of the discussion. I'm happy to, um, answer any questions that council has, but it's for these reasons that, that the team is here today to ask for city council's approval on this proposed P D and, um, and to, uh, remove the condition for underbuilding parking.
Thank you, Jeff. What I'll actually do, and, um, your third person, uh, David does not have anything to say or in your presentation, it's fine if they don't.
Uh, Mayor Noseworthy, I, I'll add three brief comments if I could, and then happy
Please go ahead.
To defer the balance of the time. Um, so my name is David Solomon, I serve as the CFO here at Mercy Hospital. My family and I live at four seventy-one Eagle Pass. Um, as I said, I'll, I'll just share a few things that I think in summary, I think we feel, um, uh, really clear on. One, I think as it relates to the P D amendment, um, that change in market conditions, specifically the recognition that in two thousand and four, when this was initially developed, um, the contemplation of a surgery center was really not part of that. Um, and, and it's just not practical or possible to do it, uh, to incorporate a surgery center in, in some of the places that are shown um, in the initial P D, the initial plan development. Um, the second thing I'll mention is, um, we, I think it's, uh, we, we are hopeful that it's evident um, that there's been a lot of thought and planning put into how we can make um, the space, uh, a, a really valuable asset for the community as a whole. Um, whether that's the trail network that, that would be reconstituted as is shown here, um, the picnic tables that would be added, um, the benches that would be added, um, mountain bike parking, um, things along those lines where, um, we would actually look a- as part of this to add value and add, um, enjoyment of the area. Um, last thing, last thing that I'll mention is, um, I, I do just wanna emphasize the, from a clinical perspective, um, the concept of having, uh, a parking structure underneath, um, this medical office building. It just operationally clinically presents, um, some significant issues primarily. Um, I think you all can probably imagine, it's, it creates some pretty significant problems for imaging equipment or equipment in the context of a surgery or procedure to have any sort of, um, vibrations or interruptions and, you know, by cars that may be coming and going. So, um, I will stop there. Um, and again, I'm appreciative of the time and the consideration.
Thank you. What I'll do is open it up for council questions of either Dan or the development team, and I'll look for raised hands. So let me just go through real quickly.
I'm sorry, Barbara, did, did we have a public comment yet?
Yeah, we had public comment, and we heard from one person, and we closed the public comment.
Okay, I wasn't sure that they wanted to comment after this. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that it was at an opportunity from the presentation. So, um, I see, uh, Councilor Bosman and Councilor Baxter have their, and Councilor Yusuf will go in that order for questions. Followed by Councilor Buell.
Thank you, uh, for the presentation, and I I'm, uh, very pleased to see growth opportunities for medical services that can take place in this area. I am, I think it's, uh, it's good. I, I have two questions. One is a very simple question. And won't make any change on, on, uh, where we're going with this, but if you look at the drawing that's currently shared, you have the access road to, just as an engineer, I'm asking this question, why would you put it on the right side where it's longer and going closer to the houses versus smack in the middle where it would be a quarter of the length?
Sure. Um, there's a significant grade difference between Night Horse Circle and, um, and the, and the, what would be the floor elevation of the, of the building. And so as you can see here in my second, in my last slide, the road is down here, and the elevation of the building is here. So we need, um, we need to maintain a reasonable slope on that road to make sure it's safe, both for, um, you know, for patients and visitors as well as emergency vehicles. And so that has, um, that dictates the length of that road, so we need to have enough distance to, to rise from here up to the, to that elevation.
Now, it's perfect, perfectly fine answer. I couldn't see that from the, from that drawing. The, the second question is about the conditions that were listed. I won't, I won't bring the, uh, underground parking up, but the conditions two and three, uh, one being the, um, uh, forty percent opacity landscape, Barbara, I'm not even sure what that word means, I'm not a native English speaker, but um, and also preserving blending requirements with natural features, and then to rebuild the trails. And I, it seems, if I, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems that you as the developer and Mercy are okay with all those conditions. So my question is more to staff, and that is, um, are these somehow requirements, conditions that come out of the land use code? Or are these conditions that you as staff, uh, came up with and then presented to the planning commission? And then as we move further in this project, is this developer and property owner, are they going to be subject to potential more additional conditions and requirements during the site plan review phase, whether it's from staff or the planning commission, that go beyond the land use and development code requirements?
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, thank you, Council.
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, thank you, Council Bosmans. Um, to speak to, I guess, the first part of that, uh, the conditions were drafted by staff based on code requirements, uh, within the L U D C. And also to an extent, the wording within the existing PD agreement. So the PD agreement does reference the trails, the loop trail, uh, on this northern um, area of the, of the existing hospital complex. Um, it calls that out specifically and given that the development does encroach upon those existing trails, that's why we felt it was appropriate to include condition number three, requiring them to, uh, rebuild that. Uh, we also felt that, you know, the trails are an amenity for the residences nearby. And because this is a PD, we have a little bit more ability to, um, impose, you know, some more specific conditions that address some of the concerns that may come up in the area. So, you know, just broadly, uh, condition number two does reference, um, sort of the intent of a lot of items within the land use code, um, specifically that uh, landscape buffer, the opacity just kind of refers to the number of plants that are required within that buffer. Um, and the code spells that out, uh, in not layman's terms, but, uh, we're familiar with, with how that would work. Um, yeah. So yeah, again, we're, we're intending to minimize the impact of the development upon the adjacent residential uses, um, and continue to provide amenities. Um, your, your last portion of the question was regarding additional conditions that may come out of the site plan review process. There, there may be, um, so the site plan review process will look at a lot more than just what's shown on, uh, this site design, uh, image right here. So that'll look at stormwater and, uh, water, uh, availability, um, sewer, uh, drainage, um, a lot more engineering specific concerns. Um, you know, look at the retaining walls that are proposed. So, uh, it'll be, it'll be reviewed in a lot more detail. And oftentimes when it is reviewed in more detail, there are some conditions that come out of it. But those are typically just tied specifically to the land use code. So it may go to planning commission with, uh, you know, a recommendation of approval, hopefully. Um, that's typically what staff likes to do, uh, when we get to that point. Obviously, there's a number of steps in between now and then. Um, and there may be some additional conditions included that they change X, Y, Z aspects of the proposal before, um, you know, the final site plan approval is, is issued. It's kind of more of a process, uh, comment there. So.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate that clarification and it was more to see if, I, I think a lot of times builders want to be clear on what they, what to expect. And I think you explained it pretty well. So appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan. We'll call, we'll call on Council Baxter.
Hi, thank you. Um, I'm just, I'm wondering why it would not be possible to move the proposed building down into that southwest corner of the parking lot? That's one question.
Move the, this, the building from here down to the corner?
Yes.
Sure. Um, we did, we did consider that. It, it would mean, um, like we're sort of building a flat spot or adjusting the grade in the, in the site to build a sort of flat spot in the middle of the site. So a couple of factors that we thought played into that. First, if you're putting it over here, arrival points get awkward. Most of the time you're trying to arrive such that the passenger side of the, of the, um, vehicle, um, is adjacent to the drop off. It helps with safety issues, um, and especially with folks with limited mobility. Um, so that's consideration. One is if we moved it, we would, we would not have that, that, that arrangement and it would, um, or we could create it, but it would create a lot more circulation, vehicular circulation on the site. Additionally, moving it into a location like that gives it a, makes it even taller on the landscape. Um, we thought that was really important here. And so, um, for that reason, building it into the hillside um, helps make, helps, helps us, um, reduce its impact, its visual impact. And, you know, there's some, as, as, as with comes, um, with sites that have grade like this kind of a, of a site. You know, the building is doing some of the work for us. It's retaining some of the, the wall or some of the earth without have to, having to just build continuous, um, retaining walls in that area. So, bunch of different reasons that, that all contributed.
I, I'm not certain I'm convinced by any of those. I think that one of the main challenges here is you have a three-story building that's impacting a view corridor that doesn't have to impact the view corridor. Um, and for me, that's incredibly challenging. I also think that there's probably some way you could incorporate it, um, even further south so that the building was supporting, uh, the grade change actually south and west of the parking lot itself. And then you could enter on the second floor from the parking lot. I'm, I'm not impressed by the creativity here of trying to, um, change the impact on the housing community and keep the view corridors, um, open and accessible.
Ms. Baxter, are you, um, are you imagining when you describe the view corridors as being directly westerly from, from the residential area?
Essentially.
Okay. I, I would, having, um, at least when I was there onsite, the hillside continues directly west of the building. So the location we have for the building, um, the hillside does continue this direction.
Sure, but it's a three-story or a two-story building, depending on how you want to look at it, blocking that corridor.
I, I understand. I think all I was getting, all I was trying to articulate was that, um, primarily, it seemed to me that views were primarily southwesterly, like, uh, so southwesterly, not directly west.
Have you been to any of those homes and, and stood in their, um, back area?
I've walked down all the trails. I haven't, I have not, um, visited any homes.
You might want to write that. I'm just, I just don't, I'm, I'm seeing a lack of creativity here and trying to solve the problem. And I see why this works best for you. I understand that. But I'm not sure it works best for the community. So I, I haven't been convinced by that.
All right, move on. Oh, unless you have a response to Council Baxter.
When, I'm not, am I muted?
No, we can hear you, Chris.
Awesome. Um, you know, I've walked the alley that's behind those houses and I mean, it's, I mean, as I recall, there are very few windows looking to the west. These are all garage doors. Um, not to say there aren't windows, but there are very few and they're up, uh, at a what I recall is that the majority of them were at a second level. Second level looking west. You know, I think your, your, your thought about moving the building south and west and sinking it down and having access onto second floor, while that helps your, your view corridor, it doesn't help patient navigation because one of the reasons, you know, Jeff had mentioned that, you know, trying to get the passenger side of a vehicle, uh, at the front door is important. Then cert, you're asking surgery center people that, um, have mobility issues to enter the building on second floor, traverse down the first floor through an elevator, have their procedure traverse back upstairs through an elevator and then out. Um, that's very cumbersome from a patient satisfaction standpoint.
Well, I, I guess, um, I think that there are other ways to handle this probably that you just haven't explored and I'm, I'm kind of disappointed that, that you're hearing that there is a, you know, that whole area behind that area, behind the building is a view corridor. I mean, you can look at it any way you want to, but I, I don't know why we have to impact it if it's not necessary. And so far you haven't convinced me it's necessary. So I'll let other counselors speak.
And I'll call on Mayor Pro Tim Yusuf.
Hi, thank you. Um, I do have a couple of questions as well, kind of similar questions to Council Baxter. Um, I'm wondering if you can let us know how many homes and residents will be intact, impacted directly by the third-story building? That's my first question. I have several.
I don't have an answer for that. I don't know a quantity.
I can chime in on that, Council Yusuf. So there are ten townhomes immediately east of the property line. Um, there's, I think it's, it may be a mixed use development. I'm unsure.
In here.
To the south of that, yeah. Um, so those, those ten structures are, are townhomes and then say we just assume the, the next four parcels are residential as well. I think those would be maybe a lesser impact. So I would say those are the most impacted. The Mercy Apartments are above the development and there is, as you can see, a better natural vegetative buffer between those apartments and the proposed structure. So I think certainly the greatest impact would be to those, to those townhomes.
It's interesting. It would be very helpful and many of our plans that we review, um, we're able to see artistic renderings and, um, this isn't super helpful. Um, it, you know, it'd be really nice to see an artistic rendering of what the residents are going to be, look like. It would be look like, because it could very well have an impact on their home values, um, to change the backyard landscape to a three-story building. So I'd be kind of interested in just kind of what, I'm wondering if, if, if that could happen. Um, and then another question I had is, um, it, it will, will the surgery center have any emergency vehicle siren, use sirens that will be creating noise in the
It, it would not. So this, the surgery center is, provides ambulatory surgery. So it provides scheduled surgery. You know, the only time that would happen is if there is a, an emergency where a patient must be evacuated. But that, but no, no traffic arriving at this facility. No.
And I do recognize the importance of access, of course, for a surgery center for patients. Um, it's critically important. And so I, I hear that, but, um, I am as well concerned about the impact on, direct impact on neighbors. And it is interesting to see that this, um, this, the, the change in market condition and the need for a surgery center out at Mercy. We're certainly growing as a community and it's wonderful to have medical resources available to our community residents. So I, I do appreciate that. But I wonder has, and have you been at at all in, um, contact with ASH and talking with them about, you know, um, about this new development? Just curious how that works in our community.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to weigh in on a little bit of that. So I, I think the biggest thing I would share is, you know, we recognize and a pretty clear trend is more and more, uh, more and more surgeries are moving to the outpatient setting. You know, for, for a couple of different reasons, one of which is patient preference. Um, it's, you know, it's, as you said, from an access perspective, it's, it's much easier and preferable to be able to walk up to a building that you can look at. You haven't had to wander through a hospital or a set of halls. And then I think from, from a financial or economic perspective, it's a little more approachable, um, which is really important. And so I think as we looked, as we looked from a, like, a market perspective and looked at where things are going, we recognize that this isn't, it's an offering that, um, is going to be more and more in need. And so we're clear that there's, there's demand for it.
Excellent. Thank you. I'll let other counselors go.
Council Buell, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. Um, first I want to say thank you for the presentation. I think increased surfaces of this type in an area that makes sense, like around Mercy, um, is great. And if we try to put this somewhere else, it'd probably have more of an impact than it does there. I, um, went and drove the area and I was appreciative that, um, you're actually looking at other areas for this rather than expanding where you were thinking because the parking is so heavily, um, congested and crazy as it is, um, that I think it, it, it makes sense. However, however, I did, um, walk that alley and, um, drove Primrose Circle and those ten townhomes seem to have the most impact. It didn't seem that there was much impact off of, um, Primrose Circle. It's a balance, right? I think that, um, minimizing the impact and enhancing the neighborhood, like you guys showing that, um, commitment and effort. And, you know, if you haven't looked at, you know, potential other arrangement with the building or if there is something that doesn't make more sense, or if there is more creativity, if there is more green that can go up to kind of hide it, um, I do appreciate that it's in the ground a little bit because I do think that that will minimize the height that those townhomes see. Um, and I, and I think that if you guys make an effort to enhance those trails and make them better and provide more amenities for the entire neighborhood, that's showing a good faith. Um, for me, yeah, it's finding that balance. And so hopefully you guys can put your best foot forward and do that.
And I, thank you. Thank you, Council Buell. I also have a question with the developers. A lot's been said tonight. And I think you hear council, uh, trying to strike the balance, balance with, um, honoring the, protecting view sheds, particularly in neighborhoods, but also recognizing the changing dynamics of healthcare and the changing, uh, nature of our community. I, I'm looking, I'm wondering if this is an all or nothing night? Or if you're, there's a willingness to consider exploring other options, other possible, some of the suggestions made here, recognizing that that takes time and decision and efforts. Um, but even as part of that good faith saying, we've looked at these other sites and here are all the reasons it will not work or hey, we found some, some options. I'm trying to, um, get a sense of your timing and your, um, uh, your responsiveness to the feedback you've heard.
Yeah, I, I've, I'm hearing the feedback loud and clear, you know, view, view corridor, uh, impact neighbors extremely important. And, you know, I, we've been, we've been trying to tackle that um, issue from the very moment we started looking at this property. It's not something we've ignored. It, it, this is a, uh, this is a derivative of, of the things that we've played around with and, and we've, we have moved this building around multiple times, multiple locations, weighed the pros and cons for each. And this is a, this is the, this is the outcome of that. And I, 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 I don't know what to say when it doesn't satisfy other people's expectations of what we've studied. But I can tell you, we've studied a lot of different options here.
One moment, uh, before we jump in, uh, Chris, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Am I finished?
Yes, you were.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Maybe I broke up. I was going to add, um, and I, I, you know, Dave, David and I probably need to talk about this a little bit, but if this request was a two-story building in this location, would that change any of your opinions? Meaning this location, one story shorter.
I'm just going to jump in, Chris. I want you to be successful and I want you to provide the services that our community needs on a piece of property that you own as well. And that's when I say balance, like I understand that and I understand like services that we need. And so I don't, I don't want you to compromise care and services, but I, I want you just again, to put that best foot forward and to find, you know, minimizing the impact and enhancing the neighborhood. And I don't know, Dan, I know, I saw you had your hand raised. I didn't know if you had anything to chime in.
I'm gonna, excuse me, just a second. I'm gonna call on Dan and then I'm gonna, I also see another counselor with a hand up, but Dan, I saw your hand up first. So please go forward.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I just have, have a couple of thoughts, um, that I wanted to highlight. Um, first, uh, in response to, I think, uh, Council Yusuf mentioned having renderings and that's something that we can certainly require at the, um, planning commission site plan review stage. You know, typically for a PD amendment like this, we're looking at fairly conceptual, um, plans. I think what the applicants showing right now on, on their screen is honestly more advanced usually than what we see for a PD amendment. Um, so we can certainly, and, and council has the, uh, ability to condition. Um, so we can certainly, and, and council has the, uh, ability to condition the approval to. Um, you know, ask for even what would be beyond a, a tip site plan review submittal. Um, to really study the view shed impacts, um, and give some direction to planning commission. On that regard to, uh, to try to protect the views for those residences. Um, I also wanted to, uh, maybe for some context, um, pose the question to, uh. I guess probably Jeff or Chris, uh, asking how exactly, exactly how tall the structure would likely be. Um, and then what the distance is from the alley. Uh, from, for that, for that, uh, east facing building wall. I think that will help, help provide some context as far as what that relief is really going to be. I measured it on. My maps is, you know, in excess of two hundred feet, uh, which is a pretty, uh, lengthy distance. Um, given a three-story structure, but, uh, if they have any insight on that, I think that would be worth, um, hearing them comment on. Uh, and then just finally again, you know, understanding. You, you as counselors do have the ability to add additional conditions, uh, if you choose to approve this. Uh, that would help potentially address those concerns. So I just think it's important to, to highlight that.
Thank you, C- Councilor Bossmans.
Yeah, I, I think this is a structural issue on how builders and developers sometimes. Run into obstacles that may not benefit progress and, and if. So to me, when I look at this, if this is a property owned by Mercy and the use is commercial and medic, uh, medical. Uh, so there's a consistent use and they wanna build a property and it is. Consistent with the land use and development code and it has gone to staff with additional recommendations and passed the planning commission. Then I think it is very problematic sometimes for developers and builders to understand. What they're facing with changes back and forth. So I would like to make a motion. And the motion is to approve the proposed amendments to the Mercy Regional Medical Center Plan Development. Allowing a ma- new medical office building to be constructed north of North Horse, Night Horse Circle. And south of the Mercy Housing Complex, subject to the, uh, following conditions, one, two, three, and four.
Is there a second? I am not hearing a. Uh, a second at this time. Is there any other, um. Motion such as a continuance or anything else from council?
I don't know what the motion would look like, but. I, I, I don't have enough, um, justification or understanding of why. Another location on the same piece of property on the same parking lot even, or not, wouldn't be appropriate. I, I feel. Like there's not enough reasoning behind that for me. So I don't, if, if they want, I mean, I think having a surgical center is an awesome idea. Don't get me wrong. I think it's great. Um, but the original plan development, you know, this is something new. Um, that wasn't in it originally and it's also outside of the parameters of where the building envelopes were originally agreed to be. And so I think that there needs to be a little bit more thought, um, go into this project. And if the. Developers would like to do that, I would love to, to see their, their, um, recommended changes or if it can't happen. Um, a real convincing argument as to why it can't happen.
I.
So Buell, you, uh, do have your microphone up.
Yeah, I, um, I actually, I'll, I'll make a motion. I just wanna, I think, is it the one that's in the packet at the top? I'm, I'm just gonna make an emotion with a condition.
Dan, can you, can you present it on the screen?
Sorry, I just wanna make sure I have the right one, cause I don't have the one where that says one, two, three, and four on it.
Okay, bear with me for one second here.
Yeah, the ones in our packet didn't have one, two, three, and.
Yeah.
And actually I don't have that on the screen either. Um. This, the condition, the way this is worded, I mean, it's got this kind of broad. Uh, conditions of approval as described in the staff reports. That's the one, two, three, four, and the planning commission staff report, which I believe was the second item after the agenda document. Um, and then it says, and as discussed in this public hearing. So that's fairly broad. If you wanna be more specific, of course, you can do that, um, with.
Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the Mercy Regional Medical Center Plan Development. Allowing a new medical office building of no more than eighty thousand square feet to be constructed north. Of Nine Horse Circle and south of Mercy Housing Complex, subjects to the conditions of approval described in the staff report. And discuss in this public hearing and include. View sheds from the townhouses that will be impacted, um, with the, um, intention of. Minimizing the impact on the neighborhoods and enhancing the neighbor, and enhancing the neighborhood.
Is there a second?
I'm gonna second that.
Open for discussion.
I'll start just since I seconded it and I have my mic off. Um, just to reiterate to, um, to the, everyone on the call, I, I. I, I absolutely recognize the value of having, um, improved and increased access to medical services. Um, you're absolutely right. People would rather have day in, get in, get out for surgeries these days versus spending the night, you know. Having that kind of access at Mercy would be a benefit to our community. So I would love to. I think all of us would love to see this and recognize that it would be very valuable to our community. I, I think it would be great if we could, you know, oh. Along, as we go along down the line, my answer, my question was answered. If we could see artistic renderings as you continue to proceed. Through with this, uh, would be very helpful. Um, just to see how we can just work, do what we can. I would think little things could help, like you're talking about. You're talking about. Land buffers and things like that. But that's my biggest concern is worrying about just the impact on those. Residents and their homes. They may be retiring there, you know, and, you know, this was their plan. And so. With this change, I just, I'm feeling conscientious for them as well, but love to see this in our community.
Any other?
Yeah, I'll just, um, reiterate that again, I, I think that this is a great. Spot for it. I think it's a great use of, um, the space. I think. You being cognizant that there are neighbors and you being good neighbors is super important. Um, if, you know, Chris and David, you find that you only need a two-story medical office building, great. Um, and if that can make the view sheds better, great. But if. Three stories is what you need to impact this community and make a difference, then try to do it in the most, um, you know. Beneficial way to those neighbors and community and enhancing everything around. Um, and then, yeah, so I, I support. The project and the location. I just want you to be aware of the neighbors and that impact on view shed.
And I, I would just like to add first of all to the developers, thank you. Thank you for looking at a way of. Um, impacting the, the health of our community. And also thank you for listening to our concerns as counselors for those living. I don't think it's necessarily a detriment to development. I think we're a partner and this is a process. And you've gotten to hear the concerns we as elected officials face and the, the balance we're striking. I, uh, also wanna recognize that this is one step in a process and you'll be going through this, um. Through several steps. I appreciate your willingness to think, uh, of other options and. Um, also to make certain that we're aware of the constraints that you may be facing. I, so I want to, uh, just recognize your effort. And, um, and also talk about the importance of the community that people moved into. And keeping that as a sense of community. And, uh, my expectation and belief is that you will work to be good neighbors. Um, if there's not any other discussion, I'll call for a vote. Let's have the vote.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes, thank you. Okay. All right, our next order of business, thank you, councilors, uh, is eleven point five. A public hearing to consider approval of the North Main Apartments Boxcar Landing. Preliminary plan development at three, thirty-eight oh one North Main Avenue. And Mark, I do believe this is your presentation. So Mark Williams has been, uh, upgraded to panelist.
He's coming in right now.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Here I am, Mark Williams from Community Development. Let me. Share my screen. Do you see a full screen?
No, we don't, we don't see anything. Not, well, we see each individual face, but no screenshot.
Okay. Try closing some other windows.
We just aren't used to Zoom anymore.
One, okay. Do you see North Main Apartments now?
Got it. It's on.
It's on.
Okay. You might know this as a boxcar landing. You've seen it before. It's boxcar landing. Initially, this was North Main Apartments in twenty nineteen. It's first submittal and they recently changed the name back to. Boxcar Landing. I'm sorry, North Main Apartments. Um, this is a preliminary plan development which requires review by planning commission and then approval at city council. Design Review Board will also take a look at this project. And then the final review would be a staff level final PD. Planning Commission and City Council approved the conceptual plan for this project back in twenty twenty-one. Since that time, the project has shrunk a little bit by nine units and the central building is a little bit taller. This is a rental project. It's not subject to fair share. And the project, uh, will not have vacation rentals and it's next to a transit stop. It's also the largest. Project, a residential project on the north side of Durango. Most of the, the big stuff is going in south of town like. Rocket Point and the Gage, uh, B L D Apartments in South Fork. So it's good to get something on the, the north side of town. So this is where the project is in the green highlight. Um. The C dot office building is right there. The Hampton Inn on Main Avenue is right here. So. This is Main Avenue five fifty. And then the last traffic light as you're going north out of town is right here. And that's the main access into the development. And this is where you would turn to go on Animus View Drive. More of a close-up of the site. As I said, there's the C dot building. And then the existing entrance that was used for when this was the community hospital. Um, is gonna be kept and improved a little bit. You can also see. Um, to the south, there's parking for the Mercedes de Los Animus. And the Mercedes de Los Animus project is, is right there to the south, which is their secondary access. So as I said, the plan calls for a hundred and fifty-three apartments and a total of twelve buildings. It's a mix of one bedroom and two bedroom units. Um, the access through Mercedes de Los Animus is gated. But there'll still be pedestrian and bicycle access through there. We don't want regular vehicle traffic going through. Uh, a neighbor's parking lot. So. Um, the traffic will go out onto Main and to facilitate that traffic, an extra. Left turn onto Main Traffic Light, uh, will be added to the existing traffic light that's right there. And then consistent with the new apartment complexes we've been getting in Durango, there's a number of amenities on site. Most of the buildings here are between thirty-nine and a half and forty-one and a half feet. And those are scattered throughout the site and we'll see that on the, the next slide. Um, the exception to this is Building A, which is the biggest building. Um, the first project that came through is not approved and one of the reasons for that was mass and scale of the buildings. The project's been redesigned since then. That's why they're a lot more and smaller and shorter. Buildings. It's easier to work with the grade when you have a smaller footprint. To get some of the units they need, they, they needed to have one larger building though. And there's one point, uh, on that large building that's fifty feet. And that's to house an elevator overrun for mechanical equipment for the elevator. This is actually allowed by the L U D C. Um, to add ten feet of height to a building to account for that extra. Mechanical height that you need for an elevator. The portion, uh, there's some other parts of the building that are forty-six feet high and. We discussed this with planning commission and, um, they approved some conditions for having that extra height. This is the site plan down here in the bottom. This is the entrance off of Main Avenue. Building A is right here in the middle. This is the tall building. The tall portion is here. A lot of this building is screened from the highway by the different buildings that are on site. So all the buildings that wrap around it are three stories. One of the things that I wanna point out, and you, you may recall this from earlier times when we've looked at this project. There's an existing trail to X Rock. That trail will remain. Along with four dedicated parking spaces for X Rock users. People who are used to parking here can still park here and then walk up to the X Rock climbing area. And then the, uh, more northern access will still be available. It's off the, it's not on this property. So I've got some renderings of what the site is gonna look like. You can see the amenities pretty well in this. There, there's a major gathering area for the apartment complex. Just south of Building A. And then a playground for children who live in the development is here. Uh, there's a dog walk area. It's screened by the visual, but it's over here. So there are quite a few. Uh, areas around the site. And then you can see that trail that I was just talking about right here. It curls around behind these buildings and. Goes up north to X Rock. And then the parking for X Rock would be in here. At earlier meetings, the owner of Hampton Inn had some concerns about. Not specifically related to the development of this project, but, um. Animus Mountain is a big mountain and when it rains a lot, he would get, uh, runoff and dirt and debris into his parking lot. And so, um, we think that the. Development of the site will actually improve that situation by channeling runoff alongside. The Hampton Insight into the city's stormwater system. And then one more thing, uh, this is not shown on the visual, but at the very first review of this. We had the applicants perform a geotechnical study to recommend a safety system for rocks coming down off the mountain. Uh, we had that report reviewed by the State of Colorado Geological Survey. Who added a couple of conditions to that report and it's still in effect. And so basically what they did was identified. The individual rocks or boulders on Animus Mountain that could be a threat. Recommended stabilizing some of those. And then also. Just here behind the apartments, there's a large safety fence. And by large, I mean, it's big, it's tall and it's. Um, it's more like a Jurassic Park fence than your everyday chain link fence. And so that condition is still part of the project. This is the south end of Building A in the main gathering area I pointed out earlier. So you can see the style of architecture is, is fairly contemporary, uh, and typical for. Colorado with the nice building materials. And I wanted to show this one again because one of the things that is related to the height variances. If you see on the, the roofs of all the buildings or most of the buildings, there's a, a void up here. So what's happening is this is a roof gable that's decorative. And in this space is where the, um. The vents and the HVAC equipment is going to be placed. And so this actually screens that rooftop equipment from. View from offsite. This is a view from five fifty Main Avenue looking up into the site. Um. They had to do some work on the grade to meet the city's slope requirements. That's ten percent is the maximum slope. And then as it gets closer to Main Avenue. That decreases to five percent. We don't want any steep slopes near our intersections, um, in case. For weeks like this, when you're more likely to slide, so they do comply with all the city's safety slope requirements. And then, uh, this is a little this image requires a little bit of explanation. This is building A. So the top side is just kind of floating in space, but you can see where it drops down. And this main white portion is where the elevator is and that roof peak is built in to incorporate that elevator overrun. And then it it the height drops a little bit and that added gable height screens the HVAC equipment. And then, um, you've got the doors here at the grade level. So you can see how they've designed the building to absorb some of that grade because it the site drops 70 feet from the high point to the low point. The bottom image is the same building, but taken from the other side. Just to give you a different visual of of how the building absorbs the grade. This is the third time that the cities reviewed this project. And so by this point, we feel we've got a lot of these issues resolved pretty well, but here's a list of the issues that we looked at and that meet the city's criteria, um, with the exception of the the building height. The plan, the proposal meets the city's strategic plan goals for affordability and economic opportunity as it is intended for workforce housing. We received one comment late last week from Claudia Anisi. She lives in the Pioneer Park neighborhood. She's can, or maybe to the neighborhood south of there. Um, but she's concerned about left turning movements from 37th Street on Domain. 37th is pretty steep. Um, and how that could be impacted from increased traffic from the apartments. The city is working with CDOT on an access control plan from 38th down to 14th. And so this is one of the things we'll be looking at, which is to slow speeds on Main Avenue. And then you can see the recommended uh, motion. I won't read the whole thing, but, um, you can refer back to it as needed. And, uh, when you're ready to circle back to me, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Also, before I open, before I open the public hearing, can you tell me is the developer also?
Yes. Elizabeth Boone is the the agent and she should be here and Dennis Shaw is the developer. He may also be here.
Sure. Well, um, what we'll do is as with other cases, we'll open the public hearing. We'll have any comments from anyone virtually who wishes to speak. We'll close that if the developer has a brief presentation uh, or is just available that once that's de- determined, we'll open it up to council and then, um, we'll call for a motion or not. So with that, I'll open the public hearing and can, um, the host tell me if we have anyone who's raised their hand to speak?
Mayor, it doesn't appear that anyone has raised their hand looking. Oh, we just got one. Okay. We have Louis, Louise.
Louise, and can you also please put the the timer up so the the speaker has a sense of of the clock? Thank you. Louise, please go ahead.
Hello, City Council. My name is Isabel Schuler. I live in the area from 32nd to 36th Street. And I too am concerned about access left on Main Street from 36th Street. As many of you may know, if you've traveled up 36th Street and tried to turn left, there's a blind corner with a big cliff. So that you can't see approaching cars until they're oh, 40 or 50 feet from the intersection of 36th and Main Street. In addition, you've got to cross two lanes of traffic and or turn left on Main. This has been an unsafe condition for many years and now by adding density at the new apartment complex down on East Second that will impact the second 32nd Street access, um, this remains a problem. Um, over the years, the hundred, 150 homes that live in the 32nd to 36th Street area have resorted to using East Second, 32nd Street to turn left on Main Street because of the unsafe conditions of 36th Street. Without a traffic, this will only increase the problem and make it extremely difficult to for southbound at the southbound access from 36th Street on Domain from our area. The increased pressure on East Second, 32nd Street due to the recent approval and building of the apartment complex across from Animus City Park. The parking on both sides of the street and minimal parking for this new apartment complex will basically reduce East Second down to a single lane road if you're driving a truck, a Ford truck or whatever. Um, and we all know that the inherent dangers and accidents that have happened at the second 32nd Street intersection over the decades. This was an integral part of the ART North segment approval. And that was one of the reasons that there was a bypass put in. However, many people still use that access in order to access Main Street or excuse me, City Market on Main Street. So I I just feel that the city has not examined all the traffic impacts of this. It's reducing our ability to turn left on Main Street for proper egress to all the city services. I would like for you to consider that in the preliminary plan development agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to council to present your your thoughts on this. And then your question is noted. Do the developers have anything, uh, on that? First of all, excuse me, is has anyone else raised their their hand to speak?
No, mayor, no one else has indicated that they'd like to speak.
With that, I'll close the public hearing and ask if the, uh, in if the developers have any presentation, if not, I would ask that they be available for questions.
And they're being promoted right now.
All right. Hello, everyone. This is Elizabeth Boone with Reynolds Ashen Associates. I'd like to thank Mark Williams for a very complete presentation and I would like to thank the mayor and the council for this time this evening. Uh, I will be really quick. Um, I just want to share kind of where we were last time you guys saw this. And really kind of, um, point to a lot of the improvements that we've made. So we have reduced the number of units slightly. We've also increased the number of buildings, which means that this project is reading as a lot kind of smaller individual buildings. That's much more neighborhood feeling than the original kind of nine large buildings. And then even the first proposal, which was even fewer buildings and taller buildings. And so we really feel like the design improvements that Mark shared with you, um, really speak to creating a new apartment neighborhood in Durango and one that has kind of fits the local uh, language in terms of materials. To clarify the 3D views that Mark showed you as part of his last slide, we're really just diagrams and the materials we intend to use are better shown in the renderings. I believe myself, the civil engineer and the client are available this evening if any questions come up. Thank you all.
Thank you. Um, council, questions of Mark and or the developers? And while I'm waiting for a raised hand, Mark, I'll throw out, um, can you answer the question about, uh, traffic that was raised in the public comment? Any assessment of that?
Yeah. So I think it's a two-part answer. The first part is we did do a traffic study for this and that was just for the intersection of, um, the apartment complex on Domain Avenue. And that was where, um, it was determined that a additional left turn lane coming out was warranted. That also protects traffic turning right or southbound into Durango. Um, and then as is for, um, the part of Main Avenue that's out of the scope, outside the scope of that traffic study. Um, I think that's going to be addressed by the access control plan that the city is working on with CDOT in the in the near future. I don't know the exact timeline. Our Department of Transportation is working with CDOT, but um, one of the purposes of the access control plan is to control speeds on Main Avenue. Um, so it could be any number of options that are looked at such as adding medians or um, other things to slow traffic.
Thank you. I see councillor Baxter has her hand up as does councillor Bosman. So we'll start with councillor Baxter and then proceed. And, um, please, if you think you're going to have a question, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. I just really want to say I've been present for all three of these reviews. I'm, I may have even been on the planning commission for one of them, who knows, but, um, I really appreciate the shift to the multiple buildings, to the, um, roof lines and disguising all the things that need to go on top, your color palette. And I appreciate the amount of housing that you'll be bringing to the community. And I recognize that it isn't, uh, fair share regulated, but, um, every, every bit helps. And so I would just want to show my appreciation and I like where it's going so far. Thank you.
Councillor Bosman. Councillor Bosman.
Thank you, Mark, for the presentation. I, um, I think it's a very positive development to see this opportunity to add housing to our community in this area. So that's great news. I, it's always unfortunate to see how many stages someone has to go through, but um, I just have a little question for the CDOT property. Is is the access to this property? Can you give a little bit of a context there? Because?
Yes, there's a, there's been an access easement through this site to the CDOT site for I don't know how long it's been there. It's been there for a long time because this property was originally the community hospital, starting in the early sixties until the late eighties, I think. Uh, and then that building was demolished. You know, I think CDOT is actually looking for a new location. And so it's a possibility that the current CDOT site could become housing as well. After CDOT leaves, I don't know what CDOT's timeline is. I think it's shorter term rather than longer term. And I think that for the city, the priority would be to get additional housing on that site.
So assuming that, um, in the long term or medium term or short term, there is the opportunity for the CDOT property to be considered for housing, whoever owns that property. Does the current infrastructure that is proposed in this um, property facilitate access and additional traffic to a potential future uh, residential area on the current CDOT property?
Yeah, it's a little hard to say without having specific plans for review, but I do believe that they're looking at an additional access. Sort of north, well, we're not looking at the image, but north of, uh, where that rendering ended, there's an opportunity to maybe have a write-in, write-out access.
Could you show that on a, on a drawing? Could you share it?
Let's see what I can do. Do you see the the site rendering?
No, no.
Okay. That might be, let me go to the aerial map. That might be best. Yeah, it's even off here. So going to way back, the 30,000 foot view. There could be an opportunity for, so this is the CDOT building in their parking lot. There's a retaining wall right here, but there is space to to come down to here. And there would need to be some improvements made, obviously. And I don't think this would be a left turn because there's a median there. So I think that's why I say I believe it would be a right in, right out, but um, also, like I said, there are no plans or right now it's just an idea. So I can't be too specific.
Well, the, I I just want to follow up a little bit on this. The CDOT property has an easement through this property. So it has to be respected, no matter who owns the CDOT property currently or in the future is, I assume that's correct. In addition, the intention is typically not to have access roads feed into directly main, main roads to reduce or to improve traffic flow, not impact negatively traffic flow. So I would assume that the CDOT property, and if that potentially becomes a residential property, should have adequate access through this property, through their easement to allow for that one access point on second, West Second Avenue. And I'm just curious to see why we're not anticipating that because it's already being mentioned, I guess, as you said earlier. That there is that opportunity for growth. And I think that would be a missed opportunity if we don't anticipate, no.
Um, so what is it you're suggesting?
I I can speak, I can speak to that, Mark, if you'd like.
Please.
So, um, council member, the, the, um, the access to the north would just be for emergency and fire. So even if, uh, this project got expanded into the CDOT, uh, the, the tenant, um, entrants would all be from the same location. That's just for fire on the north.
Yeah, I do not understand. So if I, I have a drawing here open, which is, which shows the it's page 157 of the package. It's the architectural site plan. It shows the main avenue, the interior road and all the building structures. And and it's the drawing from Reynolds Ash and Associates.
Right.
If I see the CDOT property would be in the top right corner, the building and that property continues to the northeast of that drawing. They need to go through this property if that ever were to be residential units.
That's correct. All the, all the tenant access will happen from the roads that we're building now that's on the screen here.
Okay. And these roads are are adequately dimensioned to allow for, let's say, another 50 residential units being potentially in the future on the CDOT property.
I don't know if Andrew's on the call, uh, or not, but he's a civil engineer. I'd have to defer to him on that subject, but I believe so. So I don't know if he's on the call, but.
Uh, yes, I'll be promoting him right now.
But I guess I'll, I'll just answer the question. I, um, I support this, this development. I'm very happy to see this take place. I just hope we also anticipate a future use of that CDOT property, which is already mentioned, that would not negatively impact what you are currently designing. And obviously you're doing your homework. So if if you do, then great.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm almost certain that it does take into account the, uh, the increased traffic to the north. I know for sure that the utility design does take into account the future growth. But I, I think Andrew should speak to the traffic.
Is Andrew, um,
Yeah, I'm on now.
Okay, perfect, Andrew. Thank you.
Yeah, apologies there. Some, some IT issues. Um, yeah. Good evening, everybody. Um, you know, I guess I, I can, uh, speak to the infrastructure in general. Um, you know, the improvements we are planning here. Including water and sewer would would be able to be extended to that development. As far as additional traffic, um, you know, the, the traffic study was completed by a a different engineering firm. I believe that it's primary focus was the proposed development at hand. It did not include the CDOT units. You know, if that manifests into a substantial project, um, it could trigger some additional requirements to this intersection. I, I can't, uh, expect that the, uh, the turn lane configuration might be much different, but it could trigger some needs to modify the signal timing, that kind of thing. But I do feel we're, we're pretty well, we're well positioned here to accept growth in that area regarding road widths, uh, emergency access. And as Dennis mentioned, it would require a secondary emergency access at that north end. And we've we've started to look at that. But I, I do, uh, I hope that answers your question. But I, I do, I hope that answers your question at some level.
Well, I appreciate that answer and I look forward to seeing this project move forward. Thank you all.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands by counselors, but I wanted to offer Councilor Youssef Buell an opportunity, and I also would like to make a, a comment. Is there any other? Okay. First of all, I'd like to give huge appreciation to the staff and to the planning commission. I don't think it's a problem when we go through three phases. I think all the whole community benefits. This first, what counselors first saw, I believe, was a previous city council were rectangular, just basic boxes. And yes, you can build basic boxes and they don't cost that much, but they don't necessarily create community. And I want to really acknowledge the developers on their efforts, working in hand in hand with the community development, the play and the planning commission to come back with us with something that I see builds a community between the dog park and the the playground, the bikes areas. You, you can get a sense that people will view this as a neighborhood rather than just living in a box. So I really appreciate that. And I want to recognize the balance that the staff have to take between provide, working with developers and helping provide housing, but also maintaining the character of our community. So I appreciate the effort on both parts. Thank you. On that, can we call for a motion?
Sure, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the North Main Apartments preliminary plan with the findings and conditions contained in the staff report and as discussed in this agenda documentation and direct the applicant to submit the final plan for staff review.
I'll second.
Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, let's have this vote.
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
A very happy yes. Thank you. Next, we have next we have item twelve point one, an ordinance authorizing a lease amendment with Agile Space Industries at the airport and declaring an effective date. And our interim city attorney, Bill Tuttle, is here. Do you need to say anything about this ordinance and at a minimum the number, please?
This is ordinance number zero dash two zero two three dash zero one. An ordinance authorizing an amendment to the Durango La Plata County Airport, non-air nautical commercial ground lease with Agile Space Industries, Inc. at the airport and declaring an effective date. And the presentation was made earlier on this by Mr. Vicari.
Is there any questions? Or may we have a, a motion?
I would make a motion authorizing ordinance oh two oh twenty three dash oh one, authorizing a lease amendment with Agile Space Industries at the airport and declaring an effective date.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Let's have the, the vote, please.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes. Great. Now we'll move on to item thirteen, general business items. City manager, you'll be up next. This is a discussion and possible action regarding a resolution to adopt the comprehensive parking management plan. Would you like to provide an introduction to this topic?
I'll just introduce Scott Shine, our community development director, is doing a presentation, is kind of finishing up the process that we've had on the parking management study that was done.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Scott Shine with the Community Development Department. Pleased to be with you tonight, representing a truly interdepartmental effort to create and advance this comprehensive parking management plan. Parking is not the most glamorous topic as far as the issues that we all deal with, but it is very important. It has a lot of impact on the built environment, on the character of the community, on mobility and accessibility, and a lot of, a lot of other goals that you've identified in the strategic plan. And so I'm really pleased to bring a final draft to you that factors in the, the very specific details of parking management in the broader context of other community goals that we're trying to, to accomplish. Nick, if you could share the slides, that would be great. And I'll just move through those briefly. Thank you. We'll go to the next slide. Yeah, there we are. So this has been before council twice, study sessions. And so this is a pretty abbreviated presentation, just to reorient you. There haven't been major substantial changes to the plan since we last spoke. And since you last reviewed it, we did get some additional comments on the final draft, and I'll share those with you, but it was mainly cleanup items since the last time you've seen the plan. So as I mentioned, parking has far reaching impacts on the community. You can see here why it's important to be proactive in managing parking and not just let it sort of happen without guidance and management. So next slide. This effort kicked off in June and we worked with Walker Consultants. They're really a well-respected and very experienced firm that, that focuses a lot on parking and other aspects of community planning around transportation. And felt it was very important to get a lot of community input and guidance as part of this plan. So you can see how much effort went into reaching out to the community, making sure that people had opportunities to contribute in a variety of ways and feel like this is, was a very successful effort and reaching out to the community and getting diverse viewpoints. Because as you'll see in the comments that we got, and as you know, I'm sure in talking to your constituents, there's a wide range of perspectives on parking. And some people would love to just do away with all vehicle parking and others feel like we need a lot more parking. And so I think Walker and I'll credit the transportation department, particularly Wayne Moore and his team in trying to, to find that balance of understanding those different perspectives and finding the priorities that would have the biggest impact. The next slide, I just pulled out a few quotes from the plan just to highlight the, the underlying sort of philosophy behind the plan. That it's not just parking is a standalone issue, but it's parking integrated within the broader transportation system. Thinking about different modes of transportation, different ways that people get around. And then like I've mentioned, the impacts that parking has on project viability. We saw that you know, tonight with the Mercy Project and, and the North Main Apartments has, has looked at different ways to provide parking. It's, it's amazing how much of an impact it has on the built environment and on the costs of developing property. And then the last, the second quote there, just realizing that decisions that we make about parking have real costs. And if we decide to allocate resources to more parking supply, we're, we're giving up something else that we could potentially do with those funds. And I thought the, the consultants and, and the staff did a really good job of weighing the pros and cons of different courses of action. So briefly, I'll just go through the recommendations on the next slide. Just cover and then the next one. Thank you. The, the recommendations were broken down into three categories, quick wins, short term and then long term. And as you can see, quick wins or over the next two years, things we can do to really maximize the utilization and the efficiency of the parking that we have. I think you saw also during study session in the, in the survey, people want to enhance the parking environment, I'll say. Some, some people think that might be more parking or free park, things like that. But what this plan is saying is there are things we can do in the near term that are relatively quick, relatively inexpensive that we should do first before we undertake major capital improvements or major outlay of public resources for other strategies. So these are the things, like I said, relatively quick, relatively inexpensive, do not require a lot more staff and could have potentially big impacts on how parking is utilized that's already available. So you can see the list of quick wins there. Next slide are the short term strategies. These over the next three to five years, a little bit more complex, especially the neighborhood parking permit evaluation and programs and adjusting parking enforcement hours. Those two things particularly would involve looking at additional staff, getting out ahead of that, budgeting for it, making sure the, the pricing structure is adequate to cover the additional staffing needs. So these get more complex and, and need a little more time to, to study further and, and make sure they're being set up correctly. And then last, the long term recommendations. You can see there again, a little bit more complex, more capital outlay as far as meters, all of the single space meters that we have, can we cluster those into multi-space meters and kind of clean up the downtown environment a little bit? And the other things like transportation wallets and expanding where we manage parking. Does, does North Main start to need a little more active parking management as it redevelops and develops at a little bit higher intensity? Those are the things we'll be tracking over the next five years. The last bullet there, additional parking supply. That was, you know, one of the key findings that Walker came back with was that right now, based on observed objective occupancy and vacancy existing public parking, they do not feel that additional parking supply is needed right now. They aren't saying, you know, don't think about it again for five years, you know, watch how parking is utilized, do these less expensive, easier things first, and then see how that affects parking utilization and then reevaluate the possibility of additional supply. So that'll be something that, again, we continue to monitor. So those are the three kind of buckets of recommendations. After we met with you in December, we did have the plan up on the website. We asked for additional comments through the end of December. And we tried to summarize those here, just so you got a sense of after all of that outreach, over seventeen hundred touch points, we had just a few final comments and really feel like the plan has addressed these particularly better meter technology and looking at ways to pay by phone and make sure that that's easy for, for people who are using downtown parking. And then you can see the last two bullets. We got some comments, more free parking lots, we need a new garage right next to downtown. And then you have a, a quote from a downtown employee. I, I really don't issues finding parking. And I think that just illustrates the, the wide range of perspectives and, and expectations that people have about parking. And I think I've spoken to that enough, but happy to hear your comments or respond to questions on that. Next, we just wanted to highlight that this directly accomplishes a strategic plan goal about how parking is integrated into the overall transportation system. So staff is excited to, to help council accomplish one of the very specific goals that was identified through that strategic planning process. Supports other strategic plan goals as well and, and also comprehensive plan and multimodal master plan goals. So overall, like I said, very pleased to be able to to bring this final draft to you for consideration. Like I said, it was a great interdepartmental effort. I learned a lot about our parking system, our parking officers. Like I said, parking's not a glamorous topic. That's not always the most appreciated job that our parking officers have, but it's very important. And they, they do a very good job managing this public asset. And so I appreciate their work. And I think this plan will help them sort of have a vision and, and a guide for the future. The last slide there is just the recommended motion. And I think city attorney Toot Hill can provide us with the resolution number when you're ready.
Thank you. I will open it up for questions or comments of Scott or the city manager. I see that Councilor Bosmans has his hand up. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Scott, for that presentation. I, I agree there were not too many changes to this management plan in this final version. However, one that I did see is the appendix C. Thank you for expanding that a little bit. Could you share that appendix C? I think it's page two hundred eighty six of the agenda package. I can also give you a page number.
I'll have to lean on Nick if you're able to. If you have the packet accessible, you are correct. Yep.
Bring that up.
Thank you. Yeah, that was different information. Based on the study session conversation, there were some, there were some questions about how that was discussed, the vacancy rate. And that's what was cleaned up. Is that what you're referring to, counselor?
Well, let's go to the I'll walk you through it here.
Maybe say the page again for Nick, two hundred?
It's two hundred eighty six in the agenda package.
Nick, we appreciate you being on top of this. Thank you.
No problem.
That's the drawing. Yeah. If you can zoom in on that a little bit, that would be great. So especially the right drawing of the two. So I, I, I would have liked the actual report to be parking demand and supply, but that didn't take place. It's this appendix that is as close as it gets to show if and where we would have parking shortage. The drawing is a bit outdated for July twenty first to twenty twenty first, July twenty twenty one. And it shows where we have parking issues. The red color, I understand, means we use over ninety percent of the capacity. And if orange, we use eighty percent or more of the parking capacity. And that's a monthly average. So not peak demand or anything. And these colors will be very similar from May to October, if you look at the table on the page before. Now, the report in another section also mentions that effective capacity is reached at eighty-five to ninety-five percent. Now, I believe color blind list most commonly happens in males, but to me, if I look at this page, this appendix and the colors of the downtown area, it certainly seems we have a parking supply issue since twenty twenty one, and certainly will have it in the future in the complete block where currently you see orange and red, which is from College to Eleventh Street and from Main Avenue to Fourth Avenue. And that's for about four, five, six months of the year. And the center of the red orange zone is around Second and Third Avenue and Ninth Street. Based on this data provided by staff. And I do acknowledge when I look at this, that the transit center parking, when it was constructed, it seems to have, which currently has a lot of vacancy, it seems to have addressed supply shortages on the west side of Main Avenue. But the east side of Main Avenue still remains a problem. Do I understand these colors correct? Do I understand these colors correct, uh Scott, or did I miss something in in what I just stated?
The the legend calls it out there clearly. I think you somewhere, you said it differently than how the legend lays it out. This shows vacancy rates and you were talking about occupancy. But yeah, I think you hit on the gist of the map showing the peak month and the peak uh areas where um vacancy uh hits that critical point. Um that is the one, one month out of the year that that chart or the map next to it is the average. And as you can see, the orange and the red significantly drops off when you do it as an annual average.
Yeah, so it, can you zoom in on the on the on that drawing on the right? Is that possible to show really what we're looking at? Or is that, uh, I think you can, no?
Can you verify what month of the year that is, Scott?
That's July.
July.
Twenty-one. Okay, and then since we're not zooming in, can we go one page up? Because that shows the table with all the months. The vertical lines, if I can see that, I can't really read it, but I can do it on my other, on my page. The vertical lines show the months. And the white ones at the top, six white months are May, June, July, August, September, October. So if you look at the coloring, it is very consistent throughout those months. So, and that is monthly average, so it almost seems that we have no to me, it seems very obvious that if I look at this table compared compared to the map that we have every month, based on a monthly average, occupancy rates that are above eighty and ninety percent in the majority of that area. And I'm not sure how anybody could, I mean, I hope someone can respond to me and say, that's not the case, but that's what I'm seeing.
And Wade has been promoted, so he can help flesh this out. The other element is that these numbers are um on-street metered spaces. These numbers, this table does not include the public parking lots, uh transit center and the lots on Second. Um so that's another distinction that it doesn't, it's not the full supply. But Wade, do you wanna contribute some?
I also, Wade, just bear one moment. I do wanna make certain, council members, we had this discussion before about the difference between all parking availability and just this limited. Wade, please go ahead and thank you for patiently being uh virtual for this meeting.
Uh you're welcome and nice to chat with everybody this evening. Um remember that the purpose of this exhibit is to show where we can better manage because the that part uh that it addresses within the plan is where can we manage parking to push people, in essence, educate people where they can go to park. So by using signage that shows the transit center is available, the number of spaces at the transit center were sufficient to bring all of these numbers down. Um some of the leading consultants in parking want you to shoot for approximately eighty-five percent occupancy. That gets debated back and forth, but the purpose of that is to show a vibrant community. If you have sixty-four percent occupancy, it doesn't look like it's busier that anyone wants to be there. If you have eighty percent occupancy, it means you have a s- two spaces in every block on Main and four spaces in every block on the side streets, based on the number of spaces that we have. And that's exactly what you want. You want someone to be able to find a space within the block and not have to go around the block. Now, if we're able to manage the parking either by pricing or by signage to move more people to those seventy or eighty empty spaces in the transit center, then the, all of these numbers drop. But these are not bad numbers. These are actually good numbers. The fact that you see it at ninety percent means that there is one space available out of the ten on one side of Main. So ninety percent would mean there's an empty space on either side or two spaces on one side. That's actually very healthy, not a bad thing. Their point was, when you get to those rates, that's when you consider raising the price by a quarter per hour and see if now you can push people to some of the areas that are in the white or in the gray.
Thank you. Thank you, Wade, for that explanation. Are there other questions from council? Is there a motion? Uh first of all, before we have that, excuse me, um could I please get the um resolution number? I'm thinking it's O-two-twenty-three dash O-two?
No, it's resolution number R-dash two-zero-two-three-dash-zero-five.
Two-zero-two-three, sorry, dash O-two?
No, dash O-five.
It's resolution, not in our ordinance.
Oh, yes, thank you. Sorry, got them off. Didn't quite have the spectacles. Okay, is there a motion, please?
I'll move to approve resolution R-dash twenty-twenty-three-dash-O-five.
One second.
Is there any more discussion?
Yeah.
Uh yes, please.
I'm gonna not support this plan as um it needs to clearly explain parking supply and demand. I I understand what is being said, but it's contradictory to what the consultant wrote. So they say eighty-five percent is ex- uh is uh reaching their the effective capacity. And then we have to look into an appendix not even used or intended to be used for uh understanding parking supply and demand, even though the appendix shows in red and orange for the month of July and combined with the table for six months of the year that the average monthly use is uh at the capacity, pretty much, or more. Um so the the report, in my opinion, should address clearly parking supply and demand, which is the most basic question. It should include recommendations that address the issues we face now and certainly in the future. If we even, if we continue with even part of the many projects we are studying in the downtown area, most of which will likely negatively impact parking supply. Instead, it seems most of the recommendations are consultant and technology-intensive changes that do not address the underlying issue, but items such as parking permits, mobile payments, changing parking rates, increasing parking rates, as was just mentioned, um flexible parking pass and more management items. If these tables and drawings are correct, and I trust staff that they are because they are generated by staff, it seems we have a parking shortage in one downtown area and we can use that data. Instead of mu- doing more studies, we should consider providing direction to add parking supply, for example, or have a more thorough understanding of parking shortages, supply and demand. And but we could add parking supply and skip on all the consulting-based issues by adding, for example, on either of the two city-owned lots on Second Avenue and make some progress to address this issue that has been going on for quite a large number of years.
Councillor Baxter, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I see that chart a little bit differently. I see that chart as an opportunity to use underutilized parking areas and move people from overutilized parking areas into underutilized parking areas and spread parking out across the downtown area so that so that the whole thing is green instead of red being in certain areas. Um so I see it as a tool to help us do that and something to measure against as we implement the uh management plan um ideas that staff will bring to us. So as we implement them, as we change um the demand parking situation, whether it be with different hours or different rates or um opening up different kinds of permits, whatever the staff recommends, we can then use to that chart as an example of how effective we have been because of the changes that will occur in it. So I see it a little bit differently than you do. I see it as an opportunity um and a way to measure our progress. And I really, really appreciate that um the base recommendation is not spending um hundreds of thousands of dollars to build new parking, but rather to take something that may um cost tens of thousands of dollars to see if we can have an impact first. I really appreciate that approach. Thank you.
Is there any other um discussion? I'd like to add also that I view it as uh as we stated in the study session, this was based primarily on um metered parking on off-street, on on street. Did not take into account the availability of others. So I too see it as an opportunity to maximize all that we have. I'd also like to call attention to the um to Wade, to your, to you and your team, uh the parking, I don't know the correct term, parking attendants, parking meter attendants. But I do wanna recognize that when I see them, they are thoughtful, cheerful. They make a fuss over everyone's dog and um I I think they'll, they've actually, I've seen them telling people, you know, it's, you don't need it after six o'clock. So I do wanna call out uh you and your team as well. And I hope this study, um I I recognize the work you've put into this. So um on that, I, looking around, I see that um councillor Bosmans, is your hand still up or have you just not put it down? Okay, may we have the vote, please?
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Councillor Bosmans?
Nope.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Uh the next one is item thirteen-point-two, discussion and possible action concerning support for the Rural Philanthropy Day meeting that will be held in Durango. City manager, you've um I think teed this up for us at our kind of request. Um anything you wanna just give us as a summary of this?
Go, yes, uh mayor and council, this is just a request that was given to the city council uh from the, I wanna make sure I get it right, Rural Philanthropy Day, Southwest Colorado, uh asking for a five-thousand-dollar uh donation or sponsorship uh for their event. Uh with that five-thousand-dollar sponsorship, uh that does give us some ability to be featured in their materials, but also, I think more importantly, helps them uh host uh this this event. And um the council did request to put this back on the agenda to have a a decision to go ahead and uh decide to if they would like to do the sponsorship. Uh staff has identified funding for it and just waiting on council direction.
Council, any thoughts or questions?
I really appreciated the documentation that we just received um about what they do and the impact that they have and how funding um increases after their meetings. So I was a a little bit reserved on this earlier and I I've um learned a lot about it, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, um councillor Bosmans, your microphone is on. Uh did you have a comment?
Yeah, similar as as uh as was just mentioned, I I think it's not so common for us to uh sponsor some uh entity like this. But I think uh it's definitely worth it and from what additional information that was provided, I think uh it will benefit, has benefited, will benefit our community, so I I support this.
We don't necessarily call for a vote, we just need to provide direction. Any others to Melissa? Thank you.
Yes, I support it as well. I think it's a great cause for the community and it represents a lot of different organizations, so I'm happy to see us supporting it.
Yeah, I'll echo all that, um the amount of organizations involved and the benefit that it provides. Um it's exciting that it's here in the area and I support it.
And I think it's a great opportunity for our community, for the city, and I wholly support uh issues around philanthropy in this region. So um city manager, I believe you have direction to um amend, come back to us with an amendment to the budget if necessary, if that's what's necessary.
Uh it's not what's necessary at this moment, it's just a motion to approve the five-thousand-dollar sponsorship, so all that, and we can go from there.
All right, well, then let's have a motion.
We're moved. A second.
Discussion and a roll call, a vote call.
If there's no discussion, I can go ahead and do that roll call.
I think the discussion was beforehand, but if anybody has something else to say, I'm happy to hear it. Okay, let's have the that ro- that vote.
Alrighty, thank you. Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes, thank you. Okay, we are on to our last agenda item, I do believe. Boards and commission council liaison reports. And in some cases, you you're, you may not be listed on here, but you may have had a report or in your liaison role. So please also jump in. We have natural lands as listed. I I believe councillor Baxter, that will be you.
Sure, I actually have Natural Lands, Parks and Rec and uh Economic Alliance. Um so the natural lands was pretty basic. They mostly are talking about um scheduling so that they can um uh figure out when to do um their strategic plan, those kind of things, when their meetings are. So it was just a pretty basic meeting. The Parks and Recs board meeting also contained a lot of that information in it. But um one of the things that I found really exciting and and uh staff will be bringing it to council here soon is this little booklet and it's called Parks Inventory and Future Needs Assessment. And it's very detailed about um each park, their status and um what needs to be done, uh whether it's in the current uh capital list or whether it's in a CIP or whether it's um down the road. And it differs greatly from some of the other evaluations we've had done of our parks because at the end of it, it gives a very um robust um list of what's in poor condition, what's in or what's in poor, what's in very poor, what's in fair, what's in very good and what's in good and gives dollar amounts connected to it to raise those particular amenities in each park. So it's not about bringing a park up from very poor to good, but it's about bringing the amenities in each park up to up to standard and where do we want to have that go. So I think this will be a very interesting discussion and it really lends itself to what council has said and what our community has said about wanting to maintain what we have. Um so I think you'll find this really interesting when staff brings it to us. Um and then I, there was one comment I wanted to make about the Economic Alliance. Dr. Peach, the um new economic, I think he's the assistant economic um professor at FLC, came to the Economic Alliance and gave a brief um conversation about um the same thing that he did for the Fort Lewis update on economics. Um it was about fifteen minutes instead of two hours, so he didn't get to present everything that he was um interested in presenting. But his main um focus was that without housing, um our economic vitality um will suffer um in differently than it has and more than it has. So um he talked about our uh gross domestic product, as Rachel Brown mentioned in her visit Durango update. But I um heard him say it in a different way. And what he said was that we, our GDP has declined by seven percent over the last ten to twelve years. And that decline has been masked. So it hasn't been um supported by um sales tax revenue, it's been masked by sales tax revenue. So because of the sales tax revenue that has come through our robust tourism industry um as it currently stands, we haven't noticed that our GDP has actually declined. And so um we need to pay attention to that, which means we need to focus on the other economic drivers in our community, you know, be it businesses like Stone Age or Tailwind or um restaurants or um car washes or anything you can imagine that you can think of. Um so every kind of business that we have, we need to focus on that seventy percent of our economic vitality. And without housing, we won't be able to do that. And that was his bottom line, is that housing is necessary to um create a robust seventy percent of our economy, like our tourism is robust. So I just wanted to make sure that 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 was clear, um that his his conversation at the Economic Alliance was not exactly how Rachel had presented it. So um I just wanted to make sure you all. I just wanted to make sure you all heard that part of it too. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Baxter. Are any other reports from councillors? Before I go with an IAB report. Okay, I'll just quickly say that. The Infrastructure Advisory Board met on the ninth. And we talked about a variety of issues, but we spent the bulk of our time. On the U Pass Water District, which is actually will be coming to council with a draft IGA. We talked about it and we also, we had a representative from their HOA and also their attorney there, which provided. Some insight for council or not for council, for the the advisory board as well as for myself on some of the history there. And council, I did write a note with Bill Tuttle just coming on tonight. And the comp, the complication and history of this relationship and how this. Housing development was formed. Everyone at IAB as well as the Southern Ute Water District. Supported a brief postponement to also allow our interim city attorney to review the documents, be able to answer our questions that we might have. And so we're hoping we can get that on the agenda. If it's coming up possibly in, hopefully in February. So I did want to say that was a good portion of our. Discussion and originally the IAB had not been very supportive of this IGA, but it was interesting to hear. The more of the history and more explanation and I I think there might be a different view coming out of that. So and then we also again looked again at the water rate. District and I appreciate council sending in their information on their surveys, if you haven't done so. I. Hope that you will take care of that. So that is the main report I have. Is there any other reports or? Actions to be taken under this item? Hearing none, I will call this meeting to a close. Thank you all and we will see you soon. Thanks.
Have a good night.